Good evening and welcome to the regular Select Board meeting for June 15, 2020. This is Select Board Chair Marie Angelitas. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Richard Foster.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
Thomas LaCusha.
Here.
Mark Strange.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Paul Pesterzic.
Here.
Debbie House.
Here.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Fire Chief Dearborn.
Here.
Rebecca Townsend.
Here.
Mary Beth Bergeron. She will be calling in later. From the Water and Sewer Commission. Let's see, Joshua Schimmel.
Here.
Jamie Bartak.
Here.
Thank you. And someone who's being interviewed tonight is Kathy Mullins. She's not here yet. Was that Kathy?
No, no, it was Debbie. She might be late.
Okay. And I'm looking for what residents are going to be making comments. Could you state your name?
Stephen Foley.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Larry Goldberg.
Anyone else?
Andrew Fox.
Andrew Fox. Anyone else? Okay, I'll call you when that time comes. Thank you. This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we would invite and direct it by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you will find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. And this, this meeting will include public comment. We, this Long Meadow Select Board's convening by telephone conference slash video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware, other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. The rules are, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda, and I will go down to each member and ask for their participation. In between, please mute yourself until you are being called because we often hear background and we can hear reverberation and papers moving. Votes will all be taken by roll call. Okay, I would like to start the meeting with announcements. Lynn?
Thank you. We just have a few tonight. Tomorrow is the town election. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Additional safety measures will be in place. You will enter through the handicap entrance at the community house and you'll exit through the front door unless you need the handicap and exit as well. The annual town meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 23rd, rain date of the 24th. The meeting will be outside at Long Meadow High School. A copy of the warrant's been posted online and is available for viewing at longmeadow.org/townmeeting. There is also a survey there. If you'd like to take it, it will help with our planning efforts. And we are planning an all-town code-red call for sometime this week with information on town meeting. There is a town meeting warrant forum on Monday, June 22nd at 7:00 p.m. This is a virtual meeting and the information to attend that meeting is available on longmeadow.org. And last week, I sent out a memo or a press release late last week on Friday just announcing that we will not be running any parks and recreation camps this summer and we will not be opening the pools at Bliss or Greenwood or the splash pad at Greenwood. But we did open the playgrounds and the basketball hoops have been restored. And I just wanted to make sure that that announcement was made here at this meeting so that people were aware that those were some new items that had happened as a result of COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Gold, do you have any other announcements?
No announcements.
Richard Foster?
Nothing, Mike.
Tom LaCusha?
No.
Mark Strange?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Chief, do you want to give us an update on COVID-19 and reopening plans?
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. Presented the board once again, giving an update on town cases. So we had some good news last week. We actually went down to zero active cases in the community. Unfortunately, over the weekend, we did pick up two more, but we're still doing very well. But I do want to add the caveat, although I'm very optimistic, COVID is still active in our society. And if you look at other parts of the country that have done different phased approaches and reopenings, they are seeing some resurgence of the virus. So this is not a time to let our guard down. We need to be, continue to be vigilant, engage in social distancing, wearing the mask, washing your hands, especially for those of us that are in a vulnerable population. You know, still err on the side of caution with this. I'm very interested to see what the numbers will be in a few weeks after we get a little further into phase two. I thought it was interesting today that the state set up testing sites for those folks who engaged in the demonstrations over the last couple of weeks. And I think that'll be some interesting data, too. We've continued with reopening and a lot of the town functions. Today, conducted training for all the election poll workers for tomorrow's election. We have a very robust health and safety plan that was developed for that. And they were all trained in that plan today and also in the PPE usage. Town meeting prep continues. I feel like we're in a good place with that. Town meeting also has a very robust health and safety plan developed for it. And obviously, having an outdoor town meeting requires significant logistics. We have, I believe, everything in place at the moment, including lots of signage. We continue with employee training just within the town employees that have been returning to work. Again, there's different health and safety parameters for us to reopen different parts of our offices. Been, have been working closely with Lynn on our scheduled town office reopening for, I believe, we're targeting July for that. And there's quite a bit to that with the guidance and restrictions, especially the 25% occupancy for office space. That's, if you know our town hall and our town buildings, that's a pretty tough one to accomplish. Continue on cost recovery. I think Mr. Pesterzic will update you on the CARES application. We continue to work with the FEMA reimbursement. We're still tracking costs. And we're, should be doing a reimbursement every 30 days. Last week, Superintendent O'Shea formed a school reopening task force. Emergency management and the fire department are involved in that task force. We did walkthroughs on most of the schools. Had a task force meeting. Obviously, schools, and I've said this many times before, from a recovery standpoint, when schools reopen, that does, is a significant sign of normalcy again. We're looking at all the guidances. You've probably seen different school systems have released different information. I don't think anything's set in stone for Long Meadow yet. We're still working on it. There's additional guidance that'll be coming out, I hope, this week. But if not in the next few weeks, then we'll review that, work closely with them, hopefully get our schools reopened and get back to normal. Anybody has any questions, anything, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mark Gold, do you have any questions or comments for the chief?
No, I do not.
Richard Foster? Mark Strange?
Yeah, just a quick question. Hey, Chief. So my understanding is that for the state to go from phase two to phase three, they really look at the number of hospitalizations and the burden on the, on the healthcare system. Is that, is that right? So, so you know, the reason that I, that I mentioned that is you said we were down to zero and now we're back up to two. You know, as we start to reopen, we're bound to see an increase in cases. Just wondering if there's any ideas to, you know, how, what kind of spike are we looking at that would, that would cause us to have a setback?
Yeah, Mark, I'd have to look at the, so there's what they call a dashboard on the state's reopening site. And I believe there's seven different factors. So hospitalizations, new cases, amount of testing, I'm going to miss a few here. Deaths. There's one or two other ones. So they're all in the equation to move from phase to phase to phase. Yeah, certainly hospitalization is, is one of the factors. But testing capacity, number of new cases, they all weigh in. If you look at the reopening website, they have stoplights, red, yellow, green. As you, as you meet different parameters, they'll actually change the colors on it. So it is a combination of multiple factors. So I don't think a slight spike in cases alone will, will, you know, necessarily move us away from phase three. But certainly, the combination of multiple factors could slow us down or delay a phase. Hope I answered that.
Thanks, Chief.
Tom?
Yeah, no questions, Chief. Thank you.
Richard?
No, I didn't have any, Marie. I couldn't, couldn't get my phone to work.
I thought, okay. And thank you, Chief, for your leadership during these difficult times. You've been very thoughtful and consistent and forward-thinking. So we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. And Marie, I want to thank you for your, your leadership with the board. I remember your words of encouragement five, over five years ago when I took over. You were the first ones to call me and congratulate me. And I've always really enjoyed working with you. So thank you.
Thank you. And we'll try to get your item pushed up on the agenda.
Thank you. I'm glad, I'm glad I sucked up a little bit.
Paul, did you want to talk about the reimbursements that the chief referred to?
Sure. Just very briefly. The federal government through the state has a coronavirus relief act that the town of Long Meadow is eligible for about $1.4 million covering the time period of the mid-March, start of this pandemic through December 31st of 2020. It's broken down into two sections, FY '20 expenditures and FY '21 expenditures. Last week, the application was due for the FY '20 expenditures. And basically, they're actual expenditures and estimate, and then estimates through the end of the fiscal year. We submitted the reimbursement request. The reimbursement request is made up of two components. It's made up of the 25% that we do not get reimbursed from the federal government through the FEMA grant. Plus, there are other categories that are reimbursed, reimbursable at 100%. The federal grant went in and the reimbursement that the town of Long Meadow would be seeking according to the grant is about $411,000 at this point in time.
Thank you. Mark Gold, do you have any questions?
No.
Richard?
No.
Tom?
No.
Mark?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to resident comments and please keep your comments to two minutes. State your name and your address. And I'll start with.
Good evening. Stephen Foley, 87 Carver Street. I've lived here for, my wife and I have lived here for 30 years. It's on the corner of Congress and Homecrest. And the reason I'm addressing you this evening is about the increase in the amount of truck traffic on Lower Carver Street. I sat out on my front porch last week from 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. On the average, there was 11 53-foot tractor trailer units. On the average, six of them were using their engine retarders. And on the average, four of them ran the stoplight at Laurel and Carver. How many Long Meadow PD Cruisers did I see on any of those days in those timeframes was zero. I called Sergeant Mazafaro and asked him why they weren't enforcing the engine retarder law and he, bylaw that was passed to town meeting last year. He advised me that they were short-staffed, their budget had been cut, and his officers were not trained to do that. My answer to him was that I contacted the Massachusetts State Police Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Section. And they advised me, this is before the civil disturbances started, that as soon as they had officers available, that they would be happy to enforce the overweight trucks, the speeding trucks, and the use of engine retarders. I know we have signed it. Just Lynn had responded to my email across town. I would request that we change the signboard at the corner of Congress and Long Meadow to advise them of that. And also, Marie advised me about the Traffic Safety Committee. I went on the town website. They're not even listed for meetings or agendas. And I've also been advised there's no citizens on that committee. And I would respectfully request that maybe the citizens should be represented on that committee. Thank you for your time and I appreciate your effort. Marie, I appreciate all you've done for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Larry Goldberg?
Yes. 159 Redfern Drive. Thank you, guys, for hearing me out. I've spoken to both Lynn and Mark Gold and Mark Strange in the past. My concern is bylaw enforcement in this town, specifically commercial overnight parking, as well as any overnight parking. As I exercise in the morning and I take bike rides through the town or I drive through town, I see things such as wood chippers that belong to commercial tree companies parked on Route 5 unattended, boats, commercial trucks. Last year, I spent over four hours in the fiscal meeting at the high school discussing with it with other residents that this bylaw should be enforced and should stay on the books. I've reached out to Paul Healy on numerous occasions, left him emails, messages, pictures of the violations. And he has pretty much told me that because the law is not enforceable right now, that they can't attach a property to someone that does violate, he feels it's a waste of his time. Last week, I received a call from the police department telling me that I'm harassing a town employee for asking Paul Healy to enforce these laws as it was done with me 15 years ago. And it cost me $60,000 to build a garage addition. And had I known that the laws weren't enforceable, maybe I wouldn't have built the garage addition. I would have just left the truck in the driveway and been like the other 30 violations that I know of in town. So I'm just curious what we can do to get this enforced sooner than later because it's been a year.
Okay, thank you. Andrew Fox?
Yes, Andrew Fox, 29 Lorenne Street. The pictures I sent to all of you are the view that my family and I have to look at every time we leave the house, every time we come home and at every meal, as this is the view out our kitchen window. I know that none of you look at anything like this, so I'm wondering why you continue to think that it's okay that I do. I talked to you several other times about this, yet you have done nothing. You were at town meeting the last two years where you heard residents reject any changes in the current bylaws. And additionally, several expressed their frustration with the town's lack of enforcement. Yet again, you have done nothing. I have also spoken to the building commissioner, the planning board, who did not endorse the failed attempts to change the bylaws, the previous police chief, the previous town manager, as well as the current one, and yet still, nothing has been done. Bylaws are in place for two reasons, to ensure quality of life for all residents and to maintain property values. At a time when we have the highest property tax rate in the state and you are looking for a waiver to raise it even higher, you must understand that along with the need or desire to raise taxes comes the responsibility to ensure the valuations that you wish to tax upon. Your willful allowance of the external obsolescence that plagues my neighborhood does not support your continued extraction of taxes on 100% valuation. You don't get to have it both ways. I would much prefer to happily pay taxes on 100% valuation without question and have a neighborhood that looks like any of yours. You don't have to reinvent the wheel here. The bylaws, along with their enforcement and penalty provisions, are already in place. The Select Board needs to direct the town manager to have the building commissioner and police do that part of their job and enforce the bylaws in reaction to resident complaints as they are supposed to do. I have never seen a situation where employees are allowed to pick and choose what parts of their job they're going to do and their supervisors think that that's okay. The most recent nonsense I've heard about bylaw enforcement is COVID-19, the temporary closing of housing court, and the need to have an opinion from town council as well as another town meeting to discuss when, if ever, proper penalties are applied to continuous violators, how liens will be placed if they are not paid. These are not reasons. These are just the newest excuses. This lack of enforcement has been going on for years. The previous building commissioner, Mr. Denver, enforced bylaws and assessed fines where appropriate. So clearly, there has been a method in place. Additionally, how you may or may not have a problem with step three, collection of unpaid fines, should not stop the enforcement of bylaws and assessment of fines on those who are non-compliant. Let's stop the current and continuous apathy and direct those responsible to do their jobs. Tonight, I ask that you finally do something. I ask that there be a directive from the Select Board to the town manager and a real commitment to long-term reactive bylaw enforcement and follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the Water and Sewer Commission. Lynn, do you want to talk to us about the issues that we've had? And then we'll ask for the presentation on water sewer.
Sure. I'll probably just let Springfield Water and Sewer Commission give you their presentation. And then we can address any questions you maybe have after that.
Okay, and Joshua Schimmel and Jamie Bartak, welcome. And you have a presentation or would you like to talk about the current, where I think we've been talking about water rates, the capital plan that you have, and also the quality of the water? Thanks for joining us.
Sure. Thank you, everyone. Glad to be here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to share a screen with you and we'll start. I'm going to attempt to share a screen with you, I should say. Okay, can you guys see that? Okay? I'll maximize it. How's that? Can you see?
Yes.
Okay. You're on mute, Marie. Okay, so wanted to talk a little bit. We got asked to come and talk about an update on the disinfection byproducts, the water quality issue. I think we've been in front of the Select Board twice in the past couple of years to go over this. And certainly, we've worked closely with Pete Thurber on some of these issues. And wanted to talk about that. And then a couple of other things as well, our current, talk about the capital plan. And then any questions you guys have about the, the issue of the cost sharing that we do. So I'm Josh Schimmel. I'm the Executive Director of the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. I have headphones on, so you don't have to hear my screaming children. So just give me a fair warning. I also have on the call with us Jim Larla, who is our Director of Water Operations, who's gonna talk about a few slides here. And Christina Jones is our Deputy Director for Water Operations. Sue Tower, who has spoken to you before, is our Lab and Regulatory Manager. And Dominic Pellegrino is our Director of Finance, just in terms of the cost-sharing stuff, if there's any questions. And then also, I think Jamie Bartak is on the phone and she's our Communications Manager. And you've spoken to her before. So just to go through a quick agenda here. So we're going to talk about disinfection byproducts, our current regulatory situation, some of the work we're doing up at the pilot plant. Jim's going to talk about the pilot plant that we're doing, which will allow us to make some informed decisions, short-term strategies and long-term solutions. So we're still continuing to do a lot of the short-term, short-term stuff that we talked about last year. And then talk a little bit about the proposals for cost sharing and how that affects you guys each year and then looking ahead. So, you know, as you guys know, we're a regional water and sewer authority. So we, we provide water and sewer service to a whole bunch of communities, retail and wholesale. For Long Meadow, it's wholesale water and wholesale wastewater services. And there are no questions about that, presumably. We've been doing that a long time and pretty effectively. And I think this is, there's only 10, 15 slides here. So you guys can jump in if you have questions as we go. Okay? Okay, so I'm going to hand it over to Jim and just let him walk you through real quick disinfection byproducts. We went through this in a lot of detail the past couple of years. And I think more important here is not the, the process of the disinfection, but what's going on and what have we been doing? So Jim, you want to take it over? And I'll just advance the slides when you tell me to. Sound fair?
Very good. Thanks, Josh. Good evening, board members. Just going to walk through a few of the drinking water quality issues, giving an update on, on where we are at West Parish Filters at the commission relative to water quality. So just a reminder about disinfection byproducts and how they form. Generally, what happens is when rainfall lands in the forested watershed, it'll carry organic matter in the raw water that's treated at the treatment plant. The filtration process that we have at the treatment plant dates back to what, 1975? And only removes a portion of the organic matter. The organics that are left in the water after it's treated is disinfected with chlorine. And the chlorine reacts with the, the natural organic matter to create these disinfection byproducts. So the, the samples that we take in our system, the samples that you, that you take in, in the Long Meadow system is a combination of those natural organics and the disinfection process that we use. On the next slide, Josh? So on the, the current regulatory situation in Long Meadow, as of the second quarter sampling, disinfection byproducts are sampled on a quarterly basis. The regulatory limit is based on what's called the locational running annual average, which basically means the last four quarters of your results for your samples are averaged. And if they're over 80 parts per billion, then you exceed the maximum contaminant level or a non, and then you're a non-compliant. So the current status in Long Meadow right now is that for the four locations that you sample, the results are between 62.4 and 66.9 parts per billion, which is less than the maximum contaminant level. So you're in full compliance with these total tri-halo-methanes. Was there a question or I'll keep going?
I'll, I'll, I'll give a break. You'll just finish up your presentation on the water sampling and then I'll ask for questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Previously, Long Meadow was over the, I think, when we were, the last time we were in front of the board was April of, of 2019. And at that time, I believe, four of the samples had exceeded the regulatory limit for these TTHMs. So that's been a positive improvement in terms of water quality that we've been providing to Long Meadow has, has been documented by the sampling that your water department does. The haloacetic acid V, which is another type of disinfection byproduct, the, the regulatory limit for that is 60 parts per billion. One of the four samples in town currently exceeds that just slightly at a average of 62.3 parts per billion. So the other three samples are in compliance. The next slide, Josh, please. We believe that the, the one location for the exceedance of HA5 is tied in part to the time of the sampling, with a quarter to sampling that was done. is tied in part to the time of the sampling with a quarter-two sampling that was done for Long Meadow. So this, explain this graph briefly. This graph shows the last four years of weekly water production at the treatment plant at West Parish Filters. The black line reflects this year, 2020. And on the Y-axis shows the amount of the million gallons of water per day that's produced. Right around the time COVID hit in mid-March, there was a significant drop-off in the amount of plant production and water use across our system and into the wholesalers. This situation created additional water age because the water was in our storage tanks for a longer period of time before it was used by our customers. And water age is one of the significant factors that has an impact on the amount of disinfection byproducts that are contained in the water. So this graph just shows the timing for the quarter-two sampling. And Long Meadow was at a time of very reduced production because of COVID. On the next slide, please. So what are we doing about these disinfection byproducts? A year ago, we talked about our plan to undertake a million-dollar pilot water treatment plant study. That study is underway. We're working with national experts from a consulting firm, AECOM, and also working with researchers at UMass Amherst, who are recognized experts in disinfection byproducts to help us determine the path forward. We have a three-season schedule for the pilot plant. And the dates are shown here. The seasonal planning for the pilot plant is based on the need to look at different seasonal characteristics of the raw water that comes into the plant. So we completed season one back in December. We had a report analyzing the data was released just recently. We've completed the physical testing for season two just a couple of days ago. And we have season three coming up in the August through September timeframe, which will provide us more information. So the first season that we completed, we were able to rule out one process that was being considered for disinfection byproduct removal. That's a pre-oxidation process that UMass had indicated in lab-scale testing was promising. But in the pilot scale program, it was ruled out as being ineffective. A process called dissolved air flotation is showing promise. And we continue to pilot that in the treatment plant. And we're also studying the effectiveness of a variety of coagulants, which help remove organic matter and turbidity in the water in seasons two and three. So those are the things that we're looking at now in season two. We just wrapped up season three moving forward. One very interesting result from our perspective was a possible short-term process improvement, which would involve the use of ferric sulfate as a new coagulant that we could actually use with the existing treatment plant. That would require further piloting. And also, we have plans to do a fall trial at full scale at the treatment plant, would do half of the plant flow with that ferric sulfate. And that's been shown to reduce more than 50% of the DVPs. And the effectiveness of that at full scale will depend on how quickly it clogs up the filtration process that we use. That's the current limitation that we face. And the next slide is a review of, well, there's a couple of photos of our pilot plant. We have all the equipment is set up in this shed on the campus. And all the treatment process equipment is contained within there. But that gives you a scale of the operation that we're running right now. So a reminder, a year ago, we talked about short-term strategies. We developed the strategies with the help of some of our consulting engineering firms that we're working with, just to help reduce disinfection byproducts, given the age of our system and the things that we can do with what we have for processes right now. We optimized the chlorine dose, so we review that on a daily basis. And we keep it as low as we can to provide adequate disinfection. But we try to balance that with the amount of disinfection byproducts that are produced through that process of disinfection. I just mentioned the coagulant optimization trials that are ongoing through the pilot plant and a fall study that's planned in 2020 here for a half-plant trial with that ferric compound I mentioned. I mentioned reducing water storage time or the age of the water in the system is an important factor. In the winter months, we reduce water storage in our Proven Mountain facility to limit the amount of water age for the water that we're providing to our customers. Adding storage tank mixing, which was something we had planned a year ago and implemented this year, helps reduce dead zones in these large storage tanks. So you have a better quality water that's being delivered to the customers. We're maximizing this natural organic removal by focusing in on a rapid sand filtration process, which is the most effective process that we currently have at the treatment plant. The slow sand filtration process is relatively ineffective in organics removal. And the last short-term strategy that we've been using is distribution system flushing, which helps us reduce the overall chlorine dosage that we need at the plant to keep the water safe. So as we move on, the next slide, we talk about long-term strategies. Where we're headed with the results of the pilot plant, if you can switch that slide, Josh.
Trying. There you go.
Thank you. So where we're headed on the long-term solutions and capital planning on the treatment plant side at West Parish Filters, based on the first season of piloting and the work that we've done to date, we're headed in the direction of building what's called a dissolved air flotation clarification process, which would help us remove that natural organic matter. It would be a 60 million gallon per day designed for that facility. There would be other upgrades to the treatment plant as well, electrical systems, chemical storage and feed buildings to deal with the new chemicals that would be using in that process. A schedule for design for the new treatment plant is scheduled for FY '22 and '23. The design cost at this point is a little over $1.9 million. At the completion of design and permitting and approvals from the Department of Environmental Protection, would be looking for a construction period that will last about three years from FY '24 through FY '27. And the current cost estimate for that treatment plant upgrade is about $86 million.
So just wanna add before we, that's kind of the update. And let me see if I can go back there, just about what is, what's going on up at the treatment plant. The pilot plant is really, really important for us in that it's going through all the alternatives analysis and it's gonna allow us to make informed decisions as we move forward with a lot of big investment here in the next 10 years or so. And so as you can see, there's some big investment, $86 million here between '24 and '27. And that's really what's gonna impact overall cost of operations and how that impacts all of our wholesalers and our retail portion as well. So and then, you know, the proportional cost sharing, you folks are familiar with it, hopefully. But, you know, you're a partner in the cost sharing. So it's not as if it's set up as a quote-unquote rate. It's the operating cost and your proportional use of that cost. So it supports our current projects and debt service moving forward and in the future. And it's completely proportional to your use compared to the total to operate. So each year, every December, Dominic, our finance director, sends an estimate. All of the budgeting process is based on usage trends. And so we look at a five-year trend and we see what's going on. And then we utilize that based upon that information. And we project out and we send out from that period of time, December, what we think is gonna be happening. And then we revise it in April as we're doing our budgeting process. And we're honing in on what the budget is gonna look like in the capital and the ONM and new debt service. And then again, every June, we give you a five-year plan, which we've really been working on for the past several years of getting the five-year plan nailed down to the extent that we can. And that helps with some stability. That helps with some stability in the structure of the rates and the budgeting as well. And that's really, let's see what else we got here. So next steps really is we're gonna finish with the treatment plant this next phase in the summer, fall. We're gonna try to do a coagulant half-plant trial to see if we found the silver bullet and things are looking good based on the information we have. And that'll be one component of it that will be helpful to find.
Could you please mute your phone?
Say a couple of things and that's it.
Lynn.
And I just have to wait my turn.
Lynn, can you mute?
It's not letting me for some reason. It just went through.
Okay, great.
So we're gonna be beginning the design process here moving forward on a variety of different projects. These are all cornerstone projects to upgrade the water system and the water plant, which really has not seen significant investment in close to 50 years. And then, as usual, our staff, Sue and staff and leadership up at the water plant will help your folks out with any of the assistance they need for the DEP reports. And I think the good thing is, overall, we've seen some good trends here in water quality and our ability to kind of knock down the disinfection byproducts here in the past year. So the trend is good and we're working hard. We're doing a ton of little things throughout the entire system to address water quality and do what we can until we're up and going with some of the new technology and the new treatment systems. So that's kind of all we have and be glad to answer questions from anybody.
Thank you. You gave us a lot of information. I'll take questions now, but you might end up getting some questions sent to you later after we have a chance to really digest all this. I also want to let the board know that Pete Thurber from our water department is also online. I'm sorry I didn't announce you at the beginning, Pete. So if you have any questions, whether it's for Springfield or for Pete, let me know. And so I'll go through the select board members. Mark Gold, do you have any questions?
Unmute.
Mark, we can't hear you.
You hear me now?
Yes, we do. There we go.
Thank you, Josh and Jim, for your presentations. I'll warn you that I'm a chemical engineer and maybe a little bit dangerous. But first of all, can you send us a copy of your presentation? Just so we have you send it to Lynn or Pete or somebody?
I'll do.
I guess my big question is, when I see the massive numbers of, you know, of capital investment that you're putting in, it seems to me that, you know, and I'm sure you'll correct me, is that the technology is still one of, you know, of coagulation and sedimentation kind of thing, which is, I'd say, 50 years ago technology as opposed to looking at things like, you know, reverse osmosis, which has gotten cheaper and cheaper and cheaper in very, very high volumes that literally takes everything out and doesn't introduce anything. And I just throw that out as one suggestion. Is there a commitment to really look at what I'll say is 21st and 22nd century methods of, you know, purifying water as opposed to coagulation and sedimentation and just using, you know, throwing more chemicals in and different chemicals?
Yeah, thanks for the question and that's a great question. And yeah, absolutely, there is, there is a thought. The energy costs associated with RO are really, really high. And so when we look at the strategies moving forward, we're looking at future regulations, we're looking at operating costs, and we're looking at overall investment in the technology. And it's also, you know, also operationally, the capabilities and complexity is to be able to operate the different types of options that are out there. So it is something that we have considered. And for, you know, for a plant that's gotta be, you know, up to, say, 70 million gallons a day in production, RO is a really expensive option. And so it has not been, it has been something that was, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was something that was considered, but pretty quickly came off the table for that regard, the cost, the cost to operate. And the fact that, you know, just because the technology is out there, it doesn't mean you necessarily have to engage in it. There's a lot of unintended consequences when you embrace that. So I think the strategy has been to have a really sound understanding of what the regulatory landscape looks like, understanding what our customer needs are and the amount of water we have to produce, the age of our water, how we store our water, how we get our water and distribute, transmit and distribute it. And so those factors are all looked into. I mean, we're really fortunate because we have worldwide leaders up at UMass that are part of our team and are really engaged with what we're doing. So we have a pretty impressive team with Dr. Rekow and Tobias in, helping to lead the way with some top-notch consultants as well.
Josh, can I, I'll just add something quickly to that. It's a very, very good question. I appreciate it. The use, you pretty much hit it spot-on in terms of coagulation and sedimentation. Those are the processes that we have right now. The process that we're missing is clarification. And the dissolved air flotation process is the one that's used pretty commonly with the treatment of high-quality raw waters coming from surface water reservoirs. So the treatment processes that we're looking at are consistent and cost-effective with those that have been used to treat surface water at many other New England locations. So we felt like it's, it is a time-tested process that will give us that clarification process that we need in order to provide better-treated water.
Thank you for your answer. The only comment I'd say is electricity is gonna get very, very cheap if you invest in a photovoltaic array to drive these massive RO pumps.
Appreciate that thought.
Thank you. I also want to add Mario Maza is also attending our meeting. Thank you, Mario. So if you have any questions, you can also ask Mario some. Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Everything, everything sounds good. Looks like they're going in the right direction. I did have one question. I understand you're flushing your laterals and all and getting the sediment out of there. So it's reducing your chlorine and subsequent trihalomethane loading. What are your plans, what are your long-range plans on the infrastructure, underground infrastructure replacement?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have programmed in distribution and transmission system replacement, renewal and repair. I mean, we just finished six miles of transmission main to bring the water down from the Proven Mountain storage tanks down to the river. We redid a river crossing a few years back. So, I mean, we have, I think, you know, going back three or four years, we really started to embrace asset management and the concept of the asset management and starting to get condition information on all of our critical assets and then prioritizing those assets in terms of the consequence of failure and the risk that they pose of failing. And so just, you know, that embracing those principles has really allowed us to prioritize the work, focus where we need, where we're at risk, where we have redundancy issues and where the consequence of failure is, you know, large and it's gonna impact many, many folks and towns. And so that's been, you know, that's been the approach. We have it programmed in going out. You know, our crystal ball isn't great, but we do have it programmed in really for the next 40 years with some amounts. But the next five years, we're pretty good. We've done a really big investment. I'm guessing it's gotta be close to 50 million in the large transmission, in the transmission system, just in the past five to seven years. So we're continuing to invest and not focusing on any single particular asset or group of assets, but focusing on prioritizing the stuff that is most important and largest consequence of failure and highest risk of failure.
Yeah, Marie, I had a question. Thank you. I had a question for Pete, Marie. Pete, I think I've asked before, but for the purposes of being on the, on the meeting, are we doing any secondary treatment of the water as brought in from Springfield? And if you know offhand, could you tell us what kind of free chlorine residuals we're getting at our plant coming in from Springfield?
Yeah, we don't do any secondary treatment nearly. Well, we, you know, we add the fluoride, which, you know, obviously doesn't have any effect on the water quality, you know, coming in. But as far as you're asking what we're getting into our system as a whole, or chlorine residuals or...
Yeah, what's your, what's your free chlorine readings coming into our system?
So free coming in right now, Springfield, they've kind of settled down a little bit coming in for us. Or, you know, we have, we have totals, you know, .4 to .5 range with our free coming in. with our free coming in around, you know, point three to point four coming in in that range.
Okay, so you're running, you're running an average point three to point four. Is that correct?
Correct.
And and what what is the current recommendations of state recommendations or federal recommendations on delivery point?
DEP as far as, you know, what Springfield, you know, supplies to us. I mean, you know, you have, we can't go over, you know, the four point oh. But as far as for, they don't like to see anything, you know, as far as, you know, as a as a total or a free. Um, you know, you get down to, because at the ends of our system, um, the chlorine is used up, uh, sometimes we get trace for uh, you know, for our free. Um, you know, point zero, you know, point zero, three, point zero, four.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay, so so it sounds like what you're saying, we're well in compliance with the recommendations from the state federal water guidelines and that you're getting, you've still got a a trace of free chlorine at the end of our distribution system?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank. I have no more questions, Frank.
Thank you. Um, Tom?
Yeah, um, in the presentation, you mentioned uh, the use of ferric sulfate. And has that been used before in the water that comes to our town? And um, you know, is that removed from the water before just along Meadow? Let's start with that question.
Yeah, I mean, I I I'll let Jim talk in detail, but over the years, we've used a variety of different uh, coagulants and settling agents. Uh, and a few years back, we we switched to uh, an aluminum uh, based coagulant, and we've had some success with that. And uh, but but really, part of the pilot plant was seeing how can we optimize treatment and really uh, reduce um, reduce organics, which allows us to reduce chlorine, which will help with the disinfection byproduct issue. Um, so you you know, it it is, I don't know that we've used it. It's commonly used throughout the water industry. It it it's not like a, uh, it's not a new type of coagulant. Jim, you want to add to that or CJ?
You're doing pretty well, Josh. Um, it is not a new coagulant. It is a new coagulant for uh, it would be a new coagulant for the commission. We've never used ferric sulfate before. Um, it is, it is removed in the process. You add it, you add a little bit and it reacts with turbidity and organics in the water, and then it gets removed in the clarification and filtration process. So one of the things that we're looking at in the pilot plant right now is um, trying to find the appropriate dose so there's no carryover when you use the coagulant, but um, it's pretty, it it gets removed um, during the treatment process.
Okay, because, you know, residents in our town would want to know about ferric sulfate, ferric sulfate. Um, if it comes into the water supply, there there are some folks who are very particular about any of that. So if there's any information that we need to know about that chemical, if you could send it our way, we appreciate it. But it sounds like you're saying it would be.
Sure, would be.
Amounts, if anything.
Yeah, I think it's uh, um, Tom, I think it's also important um, to understand. We we cannot just like switch a chemical and start using a chemical, right? We got to draw permits from DEP. We got to get permission to even do the um, we got permission to do the pilot study, and we have to get permission to do a half-plant trial. So um, I think, you know, uh, po- post uh, Flint, there is no room for any anybody to be willing and dealing with any of this. And so everything draws a permit, everything gets approved by DEP engineers. And and again, I think we have world-class team uh, kind of helping us through the process as well. So you have the academic side uh, of UMass with some real good leadership, and then we have top-notch consultants and sub-consultants really for that matter. So, you know, there's checks and balances throughout and um, there there's other things as well that we need to be watching uh, as well in overall water quality and the impacts of all this stuff. But that's all incorporated into the plan. So um, certainly we'll keep everybody posted, but none of none of this is going to happen without the appropriate checks and balances in place.
Okay, yeah, but if it's going to be something that is going to affect our town water, even in a very obscure way, um, I know residents are going to ask us about that chemical. So if there is anything that would be helpful for us to read, if you could send it along, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
The other thing is, I know Pete Thurber has talked about how when we look at our um, our system in terms of providing water to homes, there's always a certain amount of water loss. And and he may very clearly just determine that, you know, the amount of loss we have from all Meadows is so small, it isn't worth the trouble to to make a lot of changes in our system. Um, I have, because it's it's a system where everyone's going to be contributing to the cost of this uh, eighty, you know, eighty-five million dollar plant. Um, I'm wondering about what's the sort of water loss in in places like Springfield or or other towns in the area? Are they comparable to ours? I don't know if anyone knows.
I don't know what, I don't know what percentages is. Um, you know, there there's a recommendation to be at ten percent, but it's uh, it's guidance document. I don't believe it's a regulation per se. I think we're at twelve uh, the last time we submitted or fourteen. Um, and and a lot of, I think, the, and you guys may, Pete, what are you guys at?
You're muted. You're muted, Pete.
Sorry, Pete.
That's okay. You caught me. Caught me sleeping. No.
No, no.
Last year, um, we were down to around six and a half percent. Uh, DEP bumped us up because we did, I I did find that we did have a uh, water main break that was going into our our uh, sewer system uh, for over a month. And of course, they wouldn't accept that. So uh, they they bumped it up to around eight, eight percent. But we 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 bet in that range from the past few years now, um, like probably that, you know, that five to eight percent range.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, we're slightly, we're slightly higher than that. Um, we also have a much older system in Springfield in the distribution end versus the transmission. I think the transmission piece where where you have a lot of loss, we're tightening that up from our investment. Again, we just did six miles of uh, large, you know, forty-eight inch plus uh, water main coming from Proven. Uh, and again, with the asset management stuff, we're still in the process of assessing the condition of all of our major infrastructure. So um, and and then we do a lot of flushing as well. And I also think that, you know, as we move forward, uh, you know, down the road, when we're having better treatment um, and better water quality, and we optimize water age through what we're doing up at Proven Mountain in terms of our overall um, capital plan and operational plan, you know, we're going to end up probably flushing less. Um, and then, you know, that's that's going to help because we don't always accurately capture the amount of flushing that we do. Um, we a- and and we're working towards getting better uh, on that, but sometimes we just use a a calculation instead of a meter, uh, because we have a lot of hydrants flushing. And I think we could do a better job uh, of capturing that. And so that's something that we've been working on uh, each year. We we go out and we purchase more of the meters and are trying to expand our metering versus just pure opening the hydrants and e- estimating. So I think that's where we have our discrepancy from ten to twelve or something like that. But uh, we're within a reasonable range. Uh, and again, it's a guidance. Um.
Okay, because I just figure if we're doing a a cost-sharing sort of uh, approach to this, people who understand if this is something that they, we need to look at, because the difference, if we had six percent and Springfield has twelve percent, that's a pretty big difference. If it's eight and twelve, well, that's not that much of a difference. But um, you know, we just um, you know, I know we use a lot less water, but um, you know, if that's something that should go into the cost-sharing formula, I just wish folks who who really know what's going on, and I know Pete will be involved in this decision, uh, you know, just inform the board what's uh, the best deal for us. Thank you.
Yep, appreciate it. There there's a lot of estimating that takes place uh, in that reporting of unaccounted-for water. And uh, I I get, you you make a very good point uh, about that. So we'll we'll talk more through with Pete, et cetera.
Thank you.
Mark Strange?
Uh, I don't have any additional questions. Thanks for the info, guys. Appreciate it.
Um, I have a question. Uh, you described a huge capital plan, which I appreciate that you're working on um, trying to upgrade the facilities. And we're talking, I think you said ninety-six million, and this is like the first few steps. And we did see a huge rate. Should we count on large increase in our costs in the next five years?
Yeah, you should. I mean, I, you know, I I we don't, we don't try to uh, hide anything from anybody. We're a pretty transparent organization. So yeah, I think you, I think you should, but I think you, on the flip side of that, I think what you should understand is we do every possible thing we can do to bring in projects that are the most cost-effective way in order for us to deliver water to our wholesale and retail customers. And so uh, from a funding standpoint, we pursue a lot of different avenues for funding. We utilize the SRF on the water to the extent that we can. We're pursuing uh, some innovative federal funding policies that are out there now that um, could help as well. So I think um, you know, aside from all the engineering and operational stuff we do, financially, um, we're pretty mature financially as an organization and um, have a fairly sophisticated approach to um, how we stay financially sound. We have a solid bond rating, and that helps us keep our borrowing costs down and allows us to bring projects home at a lower cost. So we're very cognizant of all of the factors that play into our financial position, and then how that impacts the the actual cost to do the work. Um, so I think, yes, there is a lot, we're capital-intensive here for a bunch of years, not e- even beyond five years. Um, but I think the fiscal approach is going to be sound and appropriate. And whatever the costs truly end up being, they're going to be delivered in the best manner uh, that we can do it. And and uh, you know, with a prioritization of how we finance uh, to bring them home uh, as cost-effectively as possible. And as we go through our financing options, um, we'll check the box. And if we can't get financing, uh, the cheapest way, we go to the next and the next. And a lot of times, these larger projects will be funded through a multitude of, I think some of these we're projecting are going to be funded through three different um, funding sources in order to uh, make them the most cost-effective. And we package projects to make them uh, eligible for a variety of different programs, the SRF, some grant money. You guys know there's not a whole lot of grants out there. You also know the SRF for drinking water in particular uh, is very competitive with a cap at fifteen million. Uh, so we're pl- we're plugged in pretty good to that and uh, continue to pursue every avenue we can to uh, get it done as uh, effectively as possible.
Thank you very much. Um, Pete, Mario, any other questions or comments? Uh, select board? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming in and making the presentation. And I guess since you do this in June, we'll look forward to seeing you again in twenty-twenty-one. Thank you. All right, I'd like to move tonight. I'd like to move back. Um, is Kathy Mullins on? Is she muted? For interviewing for the cable advisory? Oh, I guess not. Well, I'll I'll reach back and try to find her again. I think we had heard her and she got muted. Um, I'm going to move things around a bit to try to help the people that have been uh, sitting in. And I'm going to start with the chief. I'd like to move down to EMS fees. Do you want to? You gave us a very nice presentation here. You want to just give us an overview of what you're looking for, chief? You're bored on the ambulance service EMS.
Thank you, Marie. I'll try to be quick because I know you got a really full agenda. Um, very similar information to you uh, that you received for the past few years. Um, probably the only difference this year is COVID. Um, we were on track to meet our projections. Um, Paul and I worked together on a projection of one point one million for um, EMS revenue this year. COVID did set us back a little bit um, with the COVID trend. We actually had the spike in the surge of COVIDs, but pre- pre-COVID and post-surge, I should should say, um, a lot of folks uh, didn't want to go to the hospital or call nine-one-one. Uh, we also had the impacts of telemedicine. Uh, the hospitals didn't want some folks and they're working with us uh, doing te- telemedicine, leaving people at home. Unfortunately, when we leave, unless we put some E R ambulance, the way the the regulations read right now, we cannot bill for those services. So um, although they're valuable services, um, there was no revenue generated from them. But as a result, um, that flattened our revenue a little bit. Um, we're still going to exceed last year's projection, but um, probably only five, five percent or or so, so. But it's still good news. We're still moving forward with our revenue. Our call volume um, uh, prior to COVID was elevated from the prior year. Um, I am seeing some recovery in our um, call volume now. I'm looking at the last week or um, even today, you know, they're they're up to eight EMS calls today. That's starting to look a little bit more normal. Folks are calling, doctors' offices are starting to reopen. Um, and you know, with elective surgeries and stuff, that all, those are all factors that go into um, our EMS business. I will tell you that we learned um, a lot about the vulnerabilities of our EMS business through COVID, um, things that impacted. Um, so um, so overall, um, you know, financially, we're still still doing very well. We're still covering our uh, capital costs. Uh, we're still banking the money uh, through our program. Um, we're covering uh, over thirty percent of the fire department operating budget. And um, um, I did reduce, we had another expense that was slated to go towards EMS revenue, uh, with the two additional employees because of the COVID hit and also um, there's some delays in training because of COVID. Uh, we pulled those out of the budget. Uh, I do hope to sustain enough recovery, and come back to the fall town meeting and 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 hopefully you'll entertain that proposal once again. Uh, staffing is a challenge for us. Um, and I, you know, I am concerned about overtime and burnout and things like that. Um, but I thought it was the right thing to do. Um, now, it was a recommendation I made to the town manager and uh, finance director to to pull those two positions. So we saw the financial stability was there and the fact that I could actually get them trained. So our collection rate's still great. Um, or out to a hundred and twenty days, we're uh, ninety-four um, point five. So overall, I'm recommending a three-point-five percent increase this year. Uh, that's based on the the regional average, looking at our expenses and our capital uh, costs. So um, and be open to any specific questions.
Thank you. Um, Mark Gold?
Thank you. Yeah, chief, what communities are in the Western Mass average that you say? Is it, is it just surrounding communities or does it go out to the Berkshires, Hampton County? How do you come up with that?
Yep, um, probably the the limit uh, east is uh, Munson, uh, where um, the north uh, actually all the way to Greenfield and East Hampton is probably my farthest west.
Part two of my question is, what you've got there is the twenty-twenty regional that, and our twenty-twenty-one is actually, you know, going to be, you know, basically on a par with last year's regional. What uh, what do you hear from others as their annual increase that they're, you know, going to try to put in place?
So I'll be honest with you, a lot, a lot of folks are kind of catching up to us where they do annual reviews. Um, a lot are actually using this exact uh, form. Um, so they're doing the same types of studies that we are. Um, so it's kind of all over the place, Mark. Uh, some folks are going to come in line uh, with the Western Mass average. Uh, I do work closely to the Easton Meadow chief. I can tell you that his his increase this year um, is the same as mine. Um, and their rates are identical to mine because we have very similar um, profiles. So um, you know, there's a couple of communities that kind of skew this this average that are really high, and I and I kind of, I bump those out. Um, so this is, I think this is the closest the average is we can get. So uh, and the twenty-one data, nobody's, it's not published yet. Everybody's in the same process we're in. So.
Thank you.
Uh, Richard Foster?
And I do not have any questions, Marie. Thank you.
Tom?
Uh, yeah, chief, I know that, you know, generally they look at what are the prevailing rates in the area, and it sounds like you're doing a good job of of being in that, you know, in that ballpark. Um, we also know the insurance companies just won't pay you if you charge too much. They cap it anyways, whatever they cap it at. Um, but I was really impressed when I looked at the report that you have ninety-five percent effectiveness in terms of your billing. You know, you're getting. You know, you're getting paid for, you know, only five percent. I should take all my billing over to your people because they're doing an unbelievable job.
Yeah, Tom, I mean, i- i- and I'll ask the, that's, it's, that's ninety-four percent of the collect, what's collectible. So obviously, Medicare, Medicaid cases, you know, we get, we'll get a hundred percent of that, but they certainly don't pay the insurance rate, so.
No, but you're very good work. I mean, because a lot of times, you know, there's so many things going on, and, and sometimes the billing part, you know, isn't followed up on, and it sounds like, you know, you're doing a good job on that. And that does make a big difference to, you know, you know, I think your final, you know, how you do, especially in a lean time, like right now, you still end up ahead of the game compared to what someone else might project. I mean, you're still doing pretty well, so. Yeah, it sounds good, Chief.
Yeah, our billing process, obviously, it's generated from the field. One of the reasons we've been really successful with it is before the reports get submitted to our ComStar, it was our billing company, they get the QA, Q, quality assurance, quality control here, to make sure that they're Medicaid and insurance compliant before they even get submitted to ComStar. ComStar does a secondary review, and then and if you've ever done medical billing, there's a lot of factors once it gets the, it actually gets billed. When it, the stuff that doesn't get paid actually comes back around. My administrative assistant Andrea actually goes through, and every once in a while, there's details or something missing, and we can actually chime that in, and that, that, all those combined pushes towards a rate. We do, we by far have one of the highest rates locally, so.
Yeah, but it's that double checking that, because they always, you know, they, they pay, 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 and then there's a blank spot, you know, and it's like, well, there should be this one too. And if you don't catch it, they're not going to tell you, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, good job, very good job.
Thank you, sir.
Mark Strange?
Nothing for the chief.
Thank you. Chief, we just had a regional select board meeting where we heard Hampton's going to start a ambulance service or contract out. Is that going to affect us in any way?
No, not really. We provide very little mutual aid to, to Hampton. I, I hope they're successful with it. I, I haven't really, I've been involved in some of the discussions of providing information to them, kind of what our costing is, what, you know, what it costs to operate and things like that. I hope they have the volume to sustain it out there, so it'll be better for the region for them to have it, so.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the new rates requested by Chief Gearborn?
Don't move.
Okay, Tom moves, is there a second?
Second.
Mark Gold seconds it. Debbie, could we have a, oh, any other questions or comments, discussion? Okay, Debbie, can we have a roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Could I just ask Deb a question real quick? Deb, is that item about the address change still on the agenda?
I did not receive an official request from her. She was supposed to get it and has it out.
Excellent. With that being said, I will wish everyone a good night.
Oh, Chief, Chief, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. I called Michelle earlier before our meeting just to verify that she had received the messages, and she's here on the call with us. And she did send an email about six-twenty tonight with updated information.
So I'll move that onto the agenda right now, Chief, so you can get that. You could be here when we discuss that. So do you want to tell us, Lynn, about the the new address number issue?
Oh, hi, hi there. Am I supposed to speak?
Well, no, let's, Lynn, just set us up so you can explain toward where we are, and then we'll, we'll bring it to you, Michelle, okay?
Sure.
Yeah.
So we had received a request from a resident to, regarding a property address for a house that she's purchasing. I, this apparently is a similar request to that the board has received in the past, so I had the, I had Debbie reach out a couple of times, and we hadn't heard anything back. But we left it on the agenda tonight, and I was able to reach Michelle via cell phone earlier, and she's now here on the line with her request to change an address on a house that she is purchasing. The house has a number of forty-four, and she would like to change it to thirty-eight.
Okay, welcome, Michelle. Could you give us your full name and, I guess, your address currently where you're hoping to move in Long Meadow?
Oh, hoping to move? Well, currently, I've been living, I'm hoping to move to forty-four Salem, Salem Drive. I currently live in twenty-three Cheshire Drive.
Oh, so you're talking about a mail, okay.
Yeah, so I lived in twenty-three Cheshire Drive for eleven years.
And your full name?
Michelle Hong.
Okay, all right, thank you. So you've chosen the number thirty-eight?
Yes, I think it follows with the, how, like, the, how the number of sequence that street is going, so I chose, I mean, that's a, that's a available number right now.
Okay, and I'll just ask you, Chief, since you're here, do you have any issues or problems with the change of number to thirty-eight?
I'm sorry, was that to me, Marie?
Yeah, Chief Dearborn.
Yeah, just, I have to, so I did look into the nine-on-one I D to make sure that we could change that. I don't know if you remember, we changed a, a number down, I believe it was on Forest Glen or Park a few years ago. So there is actually a process to that, so if you do officially vote, we will have to file with nine-on-one with the, the I D from that location to actually have it I D'd correctly, so. Because if she called now, it would list the current address. And if she changed her numbers on the street, it would cause confusion. So there is actually a process with nine-on-one for that, so.
So that process has to go through before the post, the application goes into the post office, is that correct, Lynn?
I believe, I think it can be done concurrently.
Oh, it can?
Yeah.
Is there any other things that we have to, any boxes we have to check in regards to change bad address?
In, in my, in my, my juri-, under my jurisdiction, that's all I have, so.
Okay, all right, so let me go through the board and see if they have any questions or comments. Richard Foster?
Nothing, Marie.
Mark Gold?
Nothing.
Uh, Tom?
Yeah, I'm just, is this Salem Road that, that runs by Concord Road where there's a rotary there?
Yes, I'm in one of the houses in the rotary.
Okay, because it, it does show, I'm looking at a map, and it shows a, a forty-three on one side and a forty-four on the other side, a twenty-four and a twenty-one across the street. So I don't understand why it isn't a forty-four already.
It is, she's switching it.
And she's going to switch it to thirty-eight?
Yes.
Well, because it looks like the house just south of that is forty-three. And it looks like the numbers are all pretty crazy on this.
Yes, the numbers are not, are all crazy, so I mean, there's a lot of numbers to pick from, actually.
Oh, I see now, what, so it's going, as you go across from Burbank into Salem, it goes to a twenty-four, and then you'd be a thirty-eight, and then it goes to a sixty. So that makes sense. Okay, yeah, that sounds all right then. You don't have a problem.
Okay, Mark Strange?
No questions.
Okay, so it, my understanding, the process is if we approve it, then it goes to, you're going to deal with it and the the regional dispatch issues, and then Lynn, you'll get back to us and let us know how it goes. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the change from forty-four Salem Road to thirty-eight Salem Road.
Yeah, so moved, yeah.
That's Tom. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, I'm looking for a roll call vote, Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All right, well, please let us know how it works out and when you finally get through the process, okay?
Okay, great, thank you.
Michelle, and welcome to Salem Road.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Chief, did you want to stay for any other items? Did you want to be here for town meeting discussion or anything?
Sure, if Rebecca would like me to, or Lynn, is there anything else you need me for?
I don't think so. Just town meeting if you wanted to be part of that.
Okay, I'll do it.
So we'll, we'll go straight to town?
Whatever the boss wants.
So we'll go to meeting. Rebecca, are you still here?
Yes.
Thanks.
Getting the, setting back up.
So do you want to just give us a little overview of where your plans are, and then I'll open it up to the select board?
Sure, and if I could share my screen, I think that might help with some specifics that I'll be going through, if that's possible.
Sure.
I see, maybe. Okay, so just first of all, we will be having town meeting on June twenty-third at six P M. And it will be at the practice field right immediately behind the high school. So you should be able to see our town website. Is that accurate? Can you see it? Just nod. Okay, good, thanks. So if you go to town meeting, excuse me, longmeadow.org/townmeeting, you'll see this website. This has been what most people have seen thus far, but the new aspects of things I want to draw particular attention to is the map and some of the logistics that we've planned. And the way, I'll go through the logistics in more detail, but I want to orient you to the rest of this page. So at the bottom, you'll see outdoor town meeting facts, frequently asked questions. Now, if you go to that page, you can see a list of thirty-three questions. You can all see these? Okay, and each of these has a drop-down button on them with lots of, of added detail, from the specifics about our numbers to may I bring my dog? So a wide variety of questions that people have asked me, and I'm trying to make sure that I address them all here. And the answer is no, you may not bring your dog unless it's a service animal. Service animals are always welcome. So for the specifics of town meeting, I want to, let's see, I'm just going to share a larger picture of this schema. Hold on one moment, please. Bear with me. All right, so you now should be seeing a more close-up version of the map. And in this map, you'll see the general parking over here at the west, this is actually the west, this is the north area, and this is the south.
I'm seeing your email.
That's not good. That's not good. All right, let me try this one more time. Ah, I see what the problem is. There we go. Forgive me on that. Can you see the map now?
The school, yeah.
Thank you for that information. Fortunately, email is all public information anyway, so there's nothing to hide. So again, back to the, the schema here. In this north parking lot over here, the district parking lot, that's where any accessible parking will be. So if somebody needs extra assistance or uses a wheelchair, parking will be here. For all others, general parking is on the main parking lot. And as you can see with these purple arrows, it directs people to go into this pool entrance. Note, it's not the main entrance, we're going into the pool entrance. And I should note that when you arrive on the campus of the high school, as soon as you get out of your vehicle or you, 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 you get onto the campus, please wear your mask. If you don't have a mask, one will be provided to you. We will have ushers and greeters welcoming you to town meeting, asking you if you have a mask. If you don't have a mask, we'll provide you with one. For people going in this direction, you'll go straight through here to this exit on the other side. And again, we're going to have signage, and we're going to have volunteers wearing yellow vests to guide you through. Once you get to this spot, you're going to be encouraged to stay ten feet away from other participants, unless you came with a, the household member who you've been with for all these months. So go through this entrance, and you'll see this black box over here. This is a voter check-in spot. We have two voter check-in spots. The other one is at the north for anybody who's coming from this direction. And I should note, if you want to stay outside, you're welcome to, to just walk this way. Form a line, the check-in spot will be here. At each of these spots, we're going to have ushers asking you if you would, so I'm sorry, after you do your, your check-in process as normal, you would be moved specifically to one of these seating areas. This is not a normal town meeting, and so we're going to be having a very orderly process of assembly and an orderly process of dismissal. And I do have detail, more detailed maps of the foot traffic patterns. But basically, the way it's going to look is, we're going to start filling up these, these two boxes here, the easternmost of the four. This box will be filled if we need the space. So we'll start with the back row and move everybody front. If somebody has brought their own chair, which they're welcome to do, they're going to go in this family blanket area, the tent and blanket area. So you can bring a blanket, lie down on the grass, relax a little. Or bring your own lawn chair, if you've got arms on your, on your chair, that's fine. But we will have chairs, and they will be sanitized for everyone. They will be spaced in one and two spots, ten feet away from each other. So to give you an idea of what that looks like, I don't think you can see this Excel spreadsheet, can you?
Think so.
Oh, you can? Oh, okay, good. So this is what I've been working on in terms of helping with the flow. So this, this is the spot here where the check-in, one check-in spot, and then there's another check-in spot down this way. People will walk in, you'll have an usher or a greeter asking you if you'd like to go to the family blanket area or if you're planning on speaking. The reason that's important is because when we seat you, you'll see one, two, one, two, one, two, one. We'll try to seat you on the end to make it easier for you to get in and out. It's an imperfect science. We're going to just try to go with it and be flexible with each other. And, and, you know, if, if you're sitting in one of these middle sections and the spirit moves you and you want to speak, you can still speak, but this just facilitates it for anybody who knows going in that they do want to speak. So once you enter here, you'll be ushered down to this section here. We'll fill it in row by row. So seat one is ten feet away from seat two. Seat four is ten feet away from seat three. So there's a wider than normal spread of the seating to help make sure that we are as safe as possible. There's a press and visitors section over here for anybody who wants to watch. But you'll see the traffic flow, which will be marked, is pretty self-explanatory, going this way. And then for any time the, during the middle of the meeting, if somebody wants to speak, they can get up and go right to the center microphones here, and we'll have the microphones set up as we normally do with the red, yellow, and green, opposed, question or motion, and in favor. After the person is done speaking, they'll go to the left or to the right, depending on which side they're seated at. Now, I also want to note one thing. We do have, in the entering flow, we do have space for people who are not wearing masks due to medical reasons. So if you have a medical reason and you indicate you have a medical reason, that's why you're not wearing a mask, we will bring you down to this section back here. We also have room for, or there will be space for porta-potties. So there's restrooms in the high school and, and porta-potties that will be provided. The flow that we've got for how people walk through the space is pretty fairly regulated. But, you know, if somebody goes down the aisle the wrong way, it's, it's not the end of the world. We're, we're all going to try to make this work. Let me think. The frequently asked questions page has a lot of different options for people to, to ask about. You know, if, if may I leave whenever I want, yes. Will there, is there going to be bug spray? Yes, we will have that available and we're also investigating whether we can spray the fields. We will have water available. And let me think of what else. We're trying to keep this brief. And so even though we're having this unusual space, we will, and the, the protocols, our normal process for speaking is the same. And so we welcome everybody, if they'd like to speak, make motions, they can do that. We ask that everything be as brief as possible. If anybody has questions about the procedures, I'm happy to, to explain them. Let me stop there and ask if you have any questions.
Okay, Mark Gold, do you have a question? Richard Foster?
None.
Tom?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, is I look at this diagram, it really looks like folks who have mobility issues. It's going to be a shorter distance to the meeting than it would be if it was in the gymnasium, you know. And, and overall, it doesn't look like it's that much further. You know, it's, it's really gonna, it's because you're going in the pool entrance, you know, and where the parking is. I think that's going to make a pretty short walk for most people. I don't think people will be feeling like, gee, I have to walk forever to get to this thing. I don't think it's really that much different than the gym, especially if you're a person who would go to the gym and sit all the way in front by the speakers. You know, in this case, you know, it'd be the same distance probably. The other thing is that area where the blankets are, I know I'm just getting a little off track, but now what if someone brings their tanglewood stuff with candelabras and wine? Is that still discouraged?
Well, fire is not permitted, so no candelabras, or at least if you bring a candelabra, you can't light the candles.
No drinking at town meeting this year?
Water is great to drink.
Okay.
I'm not going to be doing taste tests.
Drinking on town property without a.
There's that too.
Okay, plus it is a school, so, all right, no, but it looks great, looks good, your plan.
Mark Strange?
Hi Rebecca, great job with this. So I know we're going to try to move this as long as quickly as possible. But if we do run into nighttime hours, what is, because I don't think there's lighting back there. I know the football, football team typically, if they go late, they're typically in the dark. I'm wondering what kind of lighting we're gonna have.
We will have lighting and I defer to the chief on this one, he, he may have more specific details.
Yep, Mark, we're putting two of our lighting plants, the portable lighting plants out there. We're gonna need those for pickup at the end anyway, so. So it'll be plenty bright.
Thank you.
I prefer to defer away from the lights just for the bug, bug aspect, but.
All right, thank you Rebecca, it was great presentation. It would be wonderful to make that same presentation on the forum night, the night before. Maybe that's when people are going to really start tuning in and, because it's fantastic information, especially with the frequently asked questions list. I thought that, that's a great idea.
Well, thank you very much, and I, I also concur with everybody else on this meeting. Marie, just to send my appreciation to you for your years of service in the town. And thank you for your leadership in shepherding us through this massively different town meeting.
Thank you. Well, I want to say for just a few minutes Rebecca, because I was going to bring up something about the warrant. And Chief, thank you for staying tuned with us. You can take off, I don't think they have any more questions for you. I was going to talk about the warrant. I know we had several that Debbie had put together on who was going to read what. And I had an idea, I wanted to run it by the board and have Rebecca here on that. And that is, we're trying to streamline this as much as possible. I always feel that it's good to get a rhythm going between the speakers. And that's why I'm going to recommend this year that we have one person read all the warrant articles. And I was thinking of the clerk, it seemed like an appropriate position. And that way, they're, they can actually practice and move things maybe a little bit faster than switching off and on. And it's, it's different speed of reading, there's different levels of speaking. And then on top of it is, as I said, there's always a rhythm that gets going and I think it might speed things up. I wanted to know how the select board felt about the idea of having one reader rather than breaking it up into five different people. I'll start with you, Richard, do you have any ideas on that?
I don't have any ideas, but I'm in favor of the proposed.
Mark Gold?
Yeah, I don't know which proposed Richard's in favor of. I, I don't see a problem with having three people or four people read the motions. In fact, I was gonna request to read Article fourteen since I was a proponent of it. And so sometimes that helps when the person who's a proponent can answer the questions the best about it is already at the, at the microphone if any questions arise. It's not a comment on whether you can read it or not. And I mean, that's never been a holdup, Marie, so I, in, in the meeting or to the speed of it, my opinion.
I've also requested multiple microphones, so we're going to have one for the reader. Lynn and Paul will have their own microphone, so they don't have to walk back and forth to answer the questions. So if you wanted to answer questions in regards to that one, you can be at that microphone. So, and then they try to get the microphone available to the finance committee. So we don't have to pause and have people walk back and forth. Tom, what do you think about the idea?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, the good strategy is to have enough microphones so that the, you know, the finance committee who has to recommend those, you know, and that we have a microphone. Yeah, I think that would, would make it a little quicker.
So you don't like the idea of one person reading all the warrant articles?
Well, I, I mean, we always split it up, so, I mean, I don't see why we need to change it this year. I don't think it makes that much difference in time.
Okay, Mark Strange, how do you feel about it?
I mean, I'm, I know you mentioned the clerk and I'm, I'm happy to do, I'm happy to do it if that's what we decide to do. I do think it would probably save some time. I don't know how much time it would save, but I do think it would streamline it. And you're right, it's, it can be difficult to kind of get into a rhythm reading and getting a feel for, you know, how the meeting's going. So I maybe I think it's more efficient with one person.
Okay, is Rebecca, how do you feel about it?
I will recognize whoever wishes to be recognized on this for the main motions.
Okay.
I have no preference.
Good job.
But I, I can say that as long as whoever is prepared to be there, is prepared to answer the questions on it. It can vary, if you want to have everyone read except for, you know, Mark reading, making the motion under Article fourteen, you know, have a mix of things, that's an option as well.
Okay. So it's up to the board, I won't be on the board during that meeting. It was just a recommendation I had. And you can decide how you're going to go through it. This is the last meeting, if no one puts a motion on the floor to do it this way, we'll just leave Debbie to assign. Okay, all right, so let's move on. Was there anything else on the town meeting that we needed to discuss? The other thing I did recommend is that we don't read the recognition list. And that, that just is on, everyone's supposed to go online, we're going to have handouts. The handout will list all the recognition list. Also, to read motions as written. The only thing we, I think Rebecca, we should be able to say that for every single motion that's coming up. Is there one that we have to read the whole motion for?
For articles that have dollar signs attached to them, we need to know how much is being appropriated, how much we're paying.
Even if there's no change in the numbers?
Yes, the answer is yes Rebecca.
Thanks, Mr. Gold. Yes, I, I'm trying to put it in a different way. The numbers must be read.
Okay. The other thing is, Paul, you were talking about there has to be amendment on the budget?
Right, Article thirteen will require an amendment. So whoever reads the main motion would have to be another select board member potentially, who would have to read the amendment. But those will be written out with Debbie's handout for all the motions too. So the script will be there, it's just going to be a two-part process, that's all. I also like to let people know that Article number eleven, dealing with the water recy, the, I'm sorry, the solid waste recycling, the DPW has found, has looked through their grant money and they're willing to withdraw Article eleven and cover that shortfall in the purchase of the barrels with the grant money that they have received over the years. So there is a potential of the board desires to table Article eleven and it will be funded with grant money.
The other thing is that, my recommendation is that you really try to, maybe if you attend the forum, read your motions ahead of time, talk to Rebecca about how we're going to present it. I know there's always discussions just before the meeting. This meeting's going to be a little more demanding on Rebecca's time. So I think we have to really review what you need to ask her in regards to your motions and which motions can be as written, rather than having to be read out. Maybe if you mark those carefully Lynn and let the select board members know. And I was hoping there'd be some sort of discussion with the board and Rebecca about the specific motions that you are going to be reading. So the lucky guys, I hope you can really move it along fast, it's, it's because it's going to be a challenging meeting. Tom?
Yeah, Marie, you know, Debbie has already sent out a list of the motions and assigned to people. And this is kind of unique, you would, because you're listed on there as like a, a select board emeritus.
Yeah, that's okay.
And you have several to read, are you still willing to read those?
It's up to the board, it really doesn't matter to me if you want me to read them or to hand over to Steve Morantz.
Well, I think it would be tough on a, a person who gets elected tomorrow to step up and, and the first thing they do is, is have to read motions at a town meeting. I, I'd feel, I might personally would feel a lot more comfortable with you continuing that role. This is a very unique situation, but maybe we could just look at you as a select board emeritus for this.
I think something the board would have to vote on to be able to do that.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, let's see what Mark says, Mark?
No, I, I wasn't really actually commenting on that. I thought we were just gonna distribute among the other four of us for just the reasons Tom said. But now that we had a discussion about logistics, Marie's not going to be at the front of the meeting. And so for her to come up and start reading, you know, maybe, I mean, I, I'm not trying to cut you out here, Marie. It's just logistically, it may be easier to redistribute them. Though my quick, the reason I was going to make a comment is Paul Pesterzic had said Article eleven, we don't need. I, wouldn't we just say we choose to take no action on Article eleven Rebecca? Isn't that the right approach to that, to, to just get rid of it?
Yes, it's a, it's a negative main motion.
Right, so.
To take no action.
We move to take no action on Article eleven. So I don't know, Debbie, if you're listening in, maybe we're going to need to relook at some of the hoops to says the motions. But that's where eleven should be, I think.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have to do them over. Any other questions in regards to the motions?
Well, I was wondering what other people on the board thought about Marie reading some.
Well, you know, I think it makes sense because I'm a slow walker and having to get up in the front. And again, I'm thinking the fewer people reading, the better off it would be. So rather than to have five people, just stick to four then, if not, you know, three. Just, just get the rhythm going and move it along. So I, I don't mind not reading, that's fine with me. Thanks for offering to bring me up though, Tom.
No other comments from the board.
Anything else in regards to trying to keep the meeting moving? It's, it's going to be difficult and I know Rebecca's going to have a busy time. Please review your warrant, the motions you have to read and ask Paul or Rebecca any questions you might have on how to present them. I recommend the next chair also check with the citizens on whether they're going to be withdrawing that day or, and how they can do that appropriately. Because there's a certain way they have to do it. And so just try to follow through on all of that. Okay, well, good luck Rebecca, I'll be sitting in, in the back and sipping my water, cheering you on.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for her? Okay, thank you, thank you Chief. All right, let's move on. There's one other person that's been patiently waiting. First of all, is Kathy here yet? Okay, I'm going to introduce Mary Beth and then I'm going to try to call Kathy and see if I can slip her in like I did last time. And you want to tell us about the PCO, Mary Beth? Mary Beth Bergeron? I think she was hoping I was going to be. Is she still there?
Okay, I should be unmuted.
Oh, there you are, okay, great.
Here I am, here I am. Well, let me first start by thanking you Marie for your chairmanship this past year. In addition to, you know, working on this unusual town meeting and all of the other unusual things that have happened during COVID, you know, all of us can lose sight of the fact that we also had a somewhat unusual situation with the resignation of our town manager over five or six years. And it was an interim town manager that you had to help and get up to speed. And then, of course, we got Lynn Simmons, who is certainly got up to speed very quickly. And I, I know that you were integral in helping her do that. So, and on behalf of, I know that you were very involved for a period of time in the construction meetings and the building committee meetings. And we very much appreciated your input. So thank you so much for your long time service to the town of Long Meadow, Marie, thank you. Moving forward however, we have actually two PCOs for, to the attention of the select board. And if you don't mind, I'm not going to take these in numerical order. I'd like to address PCO number forty-seven, which is to approve, the building committee recommended that the select board approve PCO number forty-seven in the amount of forty-five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars to add one additional pickleball court, subject to some additional soil tests being done at the site with the contingency that the Long Meadow Del community center fund pay for, support, donate, contribute towards the fourth court in the amount of forty-five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Marie, I have a point of order, please?
Yes.
Yes, as a point of order, this, I, I believe that this motion, this request is out of order. It exceeds the authority of the select board and I'll point to the following reasons. Only town meeting can appropriate funding and that, under Mass General Law, Chapter seven C, Section seventeen, it defines a change order versus a contract modification. And it says, the change order is quote, "making changes to the work within the general scope of the contract" or any written or oral order from the project manager that causes any change in the work. And it defines a contract modification as quote, "any written alteration in plans or specifications, period of performance, price, quality, or any other provision of the contract accomplished by mutual action of the parties." Okay, it's, and also that there is a, an opinion directive actually, issued by Gregory Sullivan, the then Inspector General of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which states, and I quote, "you may not use change orders to make substantial changes to the project scope. Massachusetts courts have held that amendments to the publicly bid contract must be incidental to the original contract and scope." You know, putting change order on the, that's the end of his quote, putting change order on the top of a piece of paper doesn't make a contract scope change a change order. You know, I don't believe either the building committee nor the select board gets to decide additions to the project scope with the already approved plans. We and they can only get to oversee the construction of the plans as approved and funded by town meeting. So based on MG, Mass General Law, Chapter seven, C, Section seventeen, and the directive of the Inspector General, I would say that this, this request is currently out of order.
Okay, Mark, that's your opinion. Let's go around to all the other select board members. So what you're doing is your definition of what incidental is. And you're saying this is beyond incidental, okay, Richard Foster?
Well, Marie, I'll, I'll state what I stated last time. I felt and recorded at the last meeting that this, this is not a. Well, Marie, I'll, I'll, I'll state what I stated last time. Uh, I felt and recorded at the last meeting that this, uh, this is not a uh, a change order as per such. This is a scope change. And I, I said at that time that I felt it needed to be directed back to the town meeting for approval since it, uh, since they did not approve the, the dimension of this change at that time.
Okay, um, uh, Tom Lakusha.
Yeah, um, Mark, I agree, you know, I agree that you did a good job of researching this. And, um, it, it would have been nice if we had gotten this, uh, this information sooner so we could have looked at it. Uh, I, I don't think I can make any decision on this until I've had a time to read and guess what Mark had just read out tonight. Uh, I'd like to take a look at that before I go any further. Thank you.
Uh, look at what?
To look at what the, the laws with that Mark cited, if you just get that to the rest of the board, so.
I have no prob- I, I, I absolutely agree with you, and I do the same in your position, but I think we also need an attorney's opinion on it. Based on what I read, I obviously, I think I know where it's going to go, but I agree with you.
Mark Strange? Mark Strange?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think this is a technical argument. I think this is, this is getting bogged down in details and process. Um, I do know that pickleball is, to my surprise, extremely popular. We have, uh, we have four courts in Agawam, and they actually asked to put in two more courts. Um, as a, you know, big picture, um, you know, should, should the, the plans have, have included two more pickleball courts? In hindsight, yes. Um, but we're going to get bogged down in asking attorneys and paying attorneys to review, um, you know, procedural municipal law, and we're, we're losing sight of the, uh, the, losing, you know, sight of, you know, what's important here, and that is eventually this, this property is going to need four pickleball courts. Um, what you're going to have is you're going to have people going and, and waiting. Um, and, you know, the, the, the public pressure from, um, the pickleball community um, is going to mount, and we're going to have to, uh, consider, um, paying for two more pickleball courts um, at an increased construction costs. And, um, I just think we're being penny wise and pound foolish here. Um, it's forty-five thousand dollars out of a fourteen million dollar project. Uh, we don't have to borrow any additional money. Um, this is, this is a pragmatic solution, um, to a real problem. And if we don't handle it now, uh, we're going to have to handle it in the future at a, at a higher cost.
Yeah, I, I believe that can be argued both ways, Mark, on whether this is incidental or not. And, uh, if you really wanted to have that brought up, it should have been, we should have asked that this be referred to, to our attorney who could look at it and look at the, uh, various case law in regards to this. And again, our legal fees are really shooting through the ceiling. Uh, this was money that has been saved, and often what we did with the high school is when there were savings, we looked at what we could afford. Um, I think that, uh, there's all sorts of things that were added to the high school that was extremely expensive. Ours surpassed the forty-five thousand. It was not in the original plan, but we finally decided we could afford it. I think there's been a lot of savings in regards to this, uh, with the, um, the private organization that's been raising money, and they're looking to, uh, take care of the fourth pickleball court. Uh, I think it is, what has someone said was penny wise and pound foolish. You're requesting a legal opinion, uh, Lynn. We're going to have to get a legal opinion. Um, oh, I thought you were showing me something, Lynn. Okay. Uh, we're going to need a legal opinion, and I guess it needs to get on to the next. Is there a problem, uh, Mary Beth, in regards to timing?
Yeah, uh, well, the contractor had wanted a, an answer by July 1st, um, whether they were going to proceed or not. Um, part of the issue is we are, we have asked that soil test forums be completed. Um, because if you recall, at the last select board meeting, the, the number was higher, and that was because they suspected that, um, the soil was, uh, in, unsuitable because it was in the same location that we had found other unsuitable soils. So the building committee elected to request additional soil tests be done in the area that all of these courts would be in. Um, I do have just one off the record question. Um, and that is, and I'm not familiar, as Mark is, with Mass General Law, as it relates to change orders. Um, but we already did have two courts in the plan. You know, this is, yes, it is extending those courts. Um, but it really doesn't change the intent of the original plan to have pickleball available for our community. Now, I mean, clearly, you know, that's a legal opinion, and I'm not a lawyer. Um, but I do think that the town, uh, as, as Mr. Strange said, uh, would be penny wise and pound foolish not to be able to proceed with this because of the generosity of our Long Meadow residents and supporting the Long Meadow Adult Center. And being able to pay for the fourth.
Respond to some of these comments?
Well, I think that it's, it's a legal opinion. We, there's both sides of the legal opinion. One of the ways to approach it is to approve the PCO pending, uh, legal counsel review to make sure it's, it, it's within the law.
I'm, I'll tell you, I'm going to file an injunction, so you won't even get to go, to go there. It's, this is, it's so clearly illegal when you go and do the, look, I mean, I didn't, I'm not an attorney. I did an internet search, and it was just example after example. It's so clear that, that we don't have the authority to do, it's. It's, we don't have the authority to spend this money. It's outside the scope.
Okay, if you're going to have, uh, you're going to insist that we, we put in injunction, we can't even go to a legal opinion now, you're saying?
No, I, I'd love, but don't.
Then the next chair can have a special meeting.
You have a legal opinion and then vote on it.
Yeah, let's, why don't you talk to the next chair about having a special meeting? So this can be done by July 1st. Uh, Lynn, can you take this to our attorney? And we'll want a written, uh, opinion because there's a tendency on the board to, uh, write opinions against the town, uh, attorneys. Now, if the town attorney comes up with an opinion, uh, are you going to agree with it? Accept it?
I'm going to look at what he's.
It, it depending on what he said.
But I vote, it doesn't matter what I think, whether, how I vote, because I can vote against it if I like it, you know?
Oh, yeah.
I don't think, I can't imagine how an attorney's going to look at this and look at this case law and, and say anything else, but stranger things have happened, so let's get it going. But as I said, the case law is so compelling when you read it. I mean, it literally says that you, you, you know, I mean, we have no more authority to approve a pickleball court, an additional pickleball court, than we can put in a bocce ball court, or, you know, maybe the Sky Watching Club wants a planetarium. We don't have the authority to do it. It wasn't in the original.
I mean, we know your opinion. Let's just move along. We're going to have an attorney's opinion, whether you accept that attorney or not, the, Lynn.
Once we have an attorney's opinion, we'll proceed.
Okay, and so a legal opinion on whether this would be an illegal move that would require an injunction against the town. So is the, so PCO 47 will have to wait for the next chair. Uh, you want to talk about PCO 48?
I would say that that falls within the same, uh, question.
It doesn't, it doesn't, Mary Beth, because we already have pickleball courts. This is a, people wanting to sit next to a pickleball courts. So it may not fall into the same.
Okay.
But it may.
I mean, you may be right, Mark. I don't.
I don't, you know, it's less, it's.
We didn't have, we didn't have.
If I'm going to hold it to the, the letter of what I read.
Mark, let me finish. We didn't have covers for people to sit under in the original plan.
Well, Mary Beth, you're talking against your PCO.
I know, but I'm, I'm saying if this, if the first, if the PCO Number 47 has to go to the lawyer, then maybe this one does too.
No, let's go for a vote on this one.
All right, you got it.
Richard, do you have any questions on PCO 48?
None.
Uh, Mark?
My, my only question is, who, the, you, some of this is going to be paid for out of private funds. Is there a record of those private funds of that nonprofit board voting on this?
Yes.
And, and can I ask who's on the board who voted on it?
Uh, yeah, you can ask. Um, obviously, I'm on the board. Uh, Janine McVeigh, Judy Yaff, Pat Jorkzak, um, Kathy Kotnor, uh, missing a couple of Eleanor Crest, Saul Finestone. Um, I believe there's one more person whose name is evading me at the moment.
That's fine.
Marge Morgan?
I'm sorry?
Marge?
Oh, oh my God, yes, Marge Morgan. Yes, thank you, Marge Morgan.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom, do you have any questions on PCO 48?
No, I don't.
Uh, Mark Strange?
I just have to say that if you put in two more pickleball courts, you probably don't need a cannon. Because people aren't going to be waiting around.
I don't know, but I believe, uh, with the Borga- Borgatti courts, they had to add that can be where the people sit under.
With four courts. With four courts, right. Um, I, 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 yeah, I would, um, I, I, I'm going to support this, this, uh, this, this change, this PCO.
Okay, so, uh, is there a motion to approve PCO 48?
So moved.
Is that, that's Mark Strange. Is there a second?
Okay.
Uh, to second, Tom Lakusha. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, roll call vote.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, and, um, you'll be called in for the next chair on the select board. Thanks, Mary Beth.
Thank you very much, Marie. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, let's see, we're moving along. Long night, uh, you're looking for a motion of a couple of minutes. For six, one, twenty, twenty, regular meeting?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we afford, uh, approve the minutes of the, uh, six, one, the six, one, twenty, twenty, uh, select board meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I have an amendment.
Okay, what amendment?
It, under, under the section that's called, that speaks of PCO 37, it says the PCO amount is a hundred and nineteen thousand nine oh seven. The nonprofit would donate fifty thousand dollars toward the courts if not approved. I believe it was if approved. I think the word "not" is in there incorrectly. Probably should have asked Mary Beth while she was in. I mean, my recollections, they said they'd prove half of it if it was approved. Why would they prove it if it wasn't appro- why would they spend money if it wasn't approved?
Uh, let me, can I call Mary Beth?
Well, but just read the sentence. "The nonprofit would donate fifty thousand dollars toward the cost of, if not approved?" I mean, why would they donate anything if it's not approved? I think it was just a typo.
Okay, all right, so that's amended.
I was just trying to strike the word "not," that's all.
Okay, all right, so, um, let's see, is there a, um, second on his amendment?
Um, yeah, Tom, Mark seconded.
No, no, for the amendment.
No, it's, it's just.
Okay, as amended. Okay, so is there any discussion of accepting the minutes as amended? Debbie, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I'm looking for a motion to accept the minutes for special meeting on six, eight, twenty, twenty.
So moved.
That was Richard Foster. Is there a second?
Second, Tom.
Tom Lakusha, any, uh, discussion? Roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving down to board and committee appointments. I'm looking for a motion to approve, um, appointing Susan Shepherd to the Recycle Commission for a one-year associate term expiring six, twenty, twenty, one.
Richard Foster, motion.
Uh, is there a second?
Yeah, Tom.
Um, second. Discussion, uh, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Just one minute. Marie Angelitas? Is this Kathy? Oh, good. All right, let me get you right on. We're going to interview you for the Cable Advisory, and I'm going to ask you to state your name, your address, and, uh, why you would like to be part of Cable Advisory. Okay, just one minute, please. All right, so we did get Kathy for interview. Just one minute, Kathy. She's here to be interviewed. And so we're jumping back for the interview of Kathy Mullins. All right, I'm going to put you on now. Okay, Kathy, stay tuned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Kathy Mullins, and I live at one, two, three Wheel Meadow Drive here in Long Meadow. And I believe I can offer some ideas on accessibility to make cable more accessible, especially to the deaf and hard of hearing, because I have noticed that there's no closed captioning service and for, uh, the local programming. And I also would be happy to look at programming content and some ideas such as cultural programs and interviewing local authors.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to see who has questions. Mark Gold, do you have any questions for Kathy?
I don't have any questions.
Uh, Richard Foster?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions, but Kathy, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Uh, Tom?
Yeah, uh, hi Kathy. Thanks for, uh, volunteering. I know that you, you've been in town probably a couple of years already now, but I'm glad you're, um, making this step. I did have a question about the closed captioning, because then my understanding is that when we have all of these meetings, uh, for the select board, there's no captioning. The residents can't see what we're saying.
That's right. Hard of hearing, people need to be able to see what's being said, especially people who are completely deaf. I'm hard of hearing, and I can definitely appreciate the use of closed captioning so that people can better have access to what's being said on the TV for the cable program.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great contribution. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention and, uh, your willingness to serve on the board. Thank you.
I'm very happy to do it. It would be my honor.
Mark Strange?
Hi Kathy, thanks for stepping up and volunteering. Good luck to you.
Hi, Mark. How are you?
Okay, well, thank you very much, Kathy. Uh, it is exciting that you're bringing this new idea to, uh, the town. I think it would be fabulous. We will vote, uh, at our next meeting, which will be July 6th. Unfortunately, we have to wait till the next meeting to make a vote, but, uh, if there's, if there's a cable advisory meeting, you can, uh, go ahead and just sort of sit in and listen. I, I have great faith that you might be successful in this appointment.
Okay, that sounds good to me. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your patience with me and being able to make this happen.
Uh, well, thank you. We'll look forward to having you part of the committee. Talk to you later. Thanks, bye.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, going back to the appointments, uh, we now have the Zoning Board of Appeals. We actually have three people that are looking for two positions. Um, Marissa Komak is an incumbent, Tim McKenna is an incumbent. Uh, both those people, I checked with the chair, uh, being recommended by the chair. We now have someone new that is applying, James Tortalot, who interviewed you last time. And so we have a three-year associate term expiring six, twenty-three, and a five-year term expiring six, twenty-five. Um, and I just wanted to go through, uh, each person and see if they had any feelings on this before we put a motion on the floor. Uh, Richard, do you have any, uh, thoughts on?
I.
To the zoning board?
No, I do. I do not, Marie.
Okay, Mark Gold?
My, my only thoughts are that, because I'm a firm believer in term limits, that we have somebody new who wants to get on it. We have an opportunity to do that. You know, I don't know how you do that, but I think that we ought to try to get new people on committees, especially the zoning board of appeals.
Um, Tom?
Uh, yeah, I would say that, um, you know, in terms of Mr. Tortalot, if he has a option to be on five years, I, I think we should take him as long as we can get him. I think he's a good catch.
Uh, Mark Strange?
Now, do we have, um, um, term limits for a select board?
No.
Three-year, it's a three-year term limit, Mark. Three-year, it's a three-year term limit, Mark.
I, I just, I echo what, what, what Tom said. You know, Jim has, has years of experience, both as an attorney and a Z B A member and a planning board chair. Um, I think he'd be a great addition to the Z B A.
I do want to point out, Marissa and Tim, we're not talking about them being on for the past ten years, so it's not someone who's been, neither of these, uh, people are, um, been there as long as you and I have been, Mark. So they're, they're fairly new to the committees, um, and both are, are great people. So I think it's going to be very difficult to decide, um, who's going to be placed on that board. So I'm looking to see if there is a motion, um, for the three-year associate term.
I move we put Ja- we appoint James Tortalot to the three-year associate term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Uh, no.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, and now we need the, uh, five-year term. Uh, Tim McKenna, as I said, right now is the associate. He, um, is a, um, I believe he's an architect. Um, Marissa Comack is an attorney, um, and that's the description that I can have of these two. I'm sure you both have their, um, applications. Is there a motion for one of them to be on a five-year term?
I'll, I'll move that we appoint Marissa Comack to the five-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have one more. I'm, uh, the, I received an email from the Chair of the Conservation, Al Lasko, um, and we received a resignation from a member of his conservation board, Jim Ryan, who had to move out of town, and, uh, informed us that he had to resign from the two committees. He was a fabulous volunteer and really did some wonderful things here in Long Meadow. We're sorry, he, he's moved out. Uh, that has left the associate non-voter, that we just voted in Kieran McCully, uh, and he's asking that he be placed in Jim's three-year term ending six-thirty twenty-twenty-two so that they can have a full voting board. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Kieran McCully to a three-year term ending six-thirty twenty-twenty-two?
Marie, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Can we legally do that without advertising the announcement?
Um, I think we can, and then there's just the, uh, no one else has in- interviewed. We can then start advertising for the associate non-voting. This is not like fair hiring. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, to appoint Kieran McCully?
I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, um, discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, uh, which brings up a point, Lynn, and that's this associate non-voting. Uh, I think that's the only positions we have still avail, uh, open. Um, and Debbie, if you could sort of get that list out for the next chair. But associate non-voting, could we find out what their responsibilities are? Uh, I think, I always thought if there was not a quorum, then the non-voting became voting. Do they participate? What is their roles and responsibilities? If you could sort of pull that together, uh, that would be very helpful. Okay? Uh, any other questions or concerns about our appointments that we've, we've been putting together the past month? Now, okay, all right, let's move on to the next thing then. Let's see. Uh, one of the problems is that we discussed, uh, our town manager's, uh, salary and the bonus. We did an executive session, and, uh, to actually approve the, uh, salary increase and the bonus, uh, we have to do that in open session. That was pointed out to us by Mark. So I need a motion to approve the F-one, uh, twenty-one salary for the town manager.
So moved as well. Yeah, there's a motion to approve, but I think we should state what the salary is.
And, um, the full salary is, Paul? Is it a hundred and forty-five, did you say?
Yes, it's a hundred and forty-five for F Y twenty-one.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, um, discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, we also discussed a F Y twenty-twenty bonus. Uh, Lynn was definitely under fire all year. She hit the ground running, uh, with, uh, three major building projects, uh, including the landfill, uh, D P W and the adult center, plus, uh, multiple, uh, legal issues, and, uh, then put on top of that COVID nineteen. So it was a very, very stressful year, and I think things went very smoothly. Oh, I didn't even mention the appointment of a new, uh, police chief. I probably could sit here all day and list all the things that were on your plate. So, um, the select board wanted to give her a bonus for F Y twenty-twenty, which is a thousand dollars, and I need a motion to approve that bonus.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Tom.
Any, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving down, uh, shared service agreement discussion. Okay, uh, Lynn, uh, do you want to tell us where you are with the, uh, shared health services agreement with East Long Meadow?
Sure, thank you. Um, so I, late today, I emailed you out, um, the, the, uh, shared, the final draft shared agreement, uh, which was in your packet at your last meeting as well. Uh, it's in front of you tonight for a discussion and hopefully a vote. Uh, the, so, the Board of Health on Thursday night did pass it unanimously, um, and I'm open for any questions that you might have. I did reply to some that came in. Um, I don't know if you want me to go through what those were, or if you want to just open it up for questions from people.
Why don't you, with some of the, uh, answers that you, you came up with and the questions?
Sure, and, and I'll also throw in some that came from the Board of Health as well, because it seemed to be a common theme. Uh, one of the, one of those just pieces that needed clarification related to the structure. Uh, so the organizational structure will stay exactly as it is now. The, um, Board of Health does not oversee any employees. That is overseen by the town manager, and the shared services agreement does call for, um, a, approval of the health director by the town manager. The difference in this case would be, these are town, uh, Town of East Long Meadow employees. Do not require a vote of the select board, um, because you are entering into an I M A, an intermunicipal agreement, which is a def- a different document, um, than needing approval of department heads. So that was one, uh, clarification. Um, another is, um, you know, certainly one of the biggest benefits of this is the increase in support staffing that we would receive. Currently, we have a full-time health director who also serves as our inspector, uh, and then we have a almost full-time, not quite full-time, um, public health nurse in that, and then a ten-hour-a-week administrative support person. So, um, we would gain quite a bit of staffing in this new shared services agreement. And I do have, um, the health director for East Long Meadow, uh, she's also on the call tonight. Uh, if any of you had specific questions for her, I know she would entertain them as well. In most of, I think most of the questions related to staffing, and there were some budget-related ones. I did send you out a draft budget that had been, uh, worked on in February before COVID hit, uh, and I, I went back through it late today and made sure that everything, uh, was still what we had been projecting and, um, included in there's the grant information, uh, that changed slightly in response to COVID, with how we were using some of that funding. We were supposed to be in, um, this six months that we're in right now. So it was January to June. We were supposed to be using that, uh, money toward a shared arrangement between their health inspector and our public health nurse. So it was a trading of three hours a week from each of, each side to, um, one, help East Long Meadow with their public health nursing, and on our side, we were going to relieve Beverly of three hours a week of inspectional services so that she could, um, begin, you know, writing her standard operating procedures and making sure all of the regulations over the years, uh, were in a written format or typed format so that they could easily be transitioned, uh, to East Long Meadow, um, it, uh, into the shared agreement. Uh, but unfortunately, that didn't happen due to COVID, and we were able to use that money. Amy had applied to repurpose that money, working with both emergency management directors in East Long Meadow and Long Meadow, to bulk purchase face masks for, uh, distribution to residents. That was, that was fairly successful, because we hadn't earmarked any funds or, um, purchasing power to do that public health service. So we do have those masks still available for, uh, distribution through the adult center, and that, that, I think that was a great example of what we can achieve with a shared service. Uh, many of the situations that we encounter here in Long Meadow are very similar to what's happening in East Long Meadow. We're not, you know, immune to what they might be facing and, and vice versa. So I think we're seeing, especially with COVID, that, um, the economy of scale is really helping in, in managing things. Um, and I, you know, there's, there's a piece of me that was concerned if we had opened up pools and, um, camps, that we would not have the staffing capability to do the necessary inspections. We would have figured something out, but, um, certainly if we had a larger department that did have two full-time inspectors, that would not have been a concern, uh, and that's what we would be, we would have with a shared service agreement.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Uh, okay, I'm going to go through everyone and get some questions. I'm going to switch it up, though, and start with Mark Strange. Do you have any questions or comments for Lynn?
Yeah, can I, I just kind of want to run through what, what I think my understanding is of the, of the organizational structure, just so I have it straight in, in my head. Um, so, so the, so the employees, it's, it's going to be, East Long Meadow is going to be the host community. Um, the health director will be Amy, uh, once, uh, starting January first, which is when, um, our health director, Beverly, is going to be retiring. Is that right?
Yes.
So then, um, Amy is going to be managing all the staff?
Correct.
Including the public health nurse?
Correct.
Now, is, um, I, I should know who, who he or she is, but, um, is that person going to stay a Long Meadow employee, or is that person going to now be an East Long Meadow employee?
Uh, so that person is actually, um, Carol Steiner, and she's retiring the end of June. Uh, so we're in a unique position where we would need to either, um, retain our own public health nurse again, or, um, look at some vendor-type contract situation as we worked out the details of this, or, uh, pursue the public health nurse now as part of the shared agreement, um, and they would be a Town of East Long Meadow employee.
And so what for, so that, that would, if that were to happen, then all the employees would be East Long Meadow employees, and then we would, annually, we would send them some sort of payment and assessment, um, twice a year to compensate for whatever benefits that we're receiving from the agreement.
Correct, yep.
Uh, okay, thank you.
Tom?
Uh, no questions at this time, thank you.
Uh, Richard?
No questions.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm in somewhat of a disadvantage, because I, somehow I got these documents six minutes or seven minutes before the, our meeting started, so I haven't had a chance to look through them. Lynn, is there a dip, is there any change to the, the shared services document from the last time we saw it?
There's no change to the shared services document. Um, and so the additional new documents were the, uh, Amy's resume that had been asked for. Um, I had provided just the two annual reports, so you could see just the context of what both health departments are working on and, um, the budget. So, and yes, you did receive that late, and that's my, um, my, uh, fault. I unfortunately did not get it done. Last week, we were working on all the reopening plans. Um, and so I, I just unfortunately didn't get it to you before tonight.
So, in terms of the budget, we, you know, we're going to town meeting with the health department budget. Is this consistent with that budget?
It is, yep. Because the first six months of F Y twenty-one will, uh, Beverly stays a Town of Long Meadow employee, and we continue to pay her funds, and then, beginning January first, is when we transition fully into the shared district, shared services, um, and we would then start paying out of those, uh, salary funds toward East Long Meadow. We would pay out of the, what we've already budgeted for, for F Y twenty-one, for Beverly's salary. That would then go to East Long Meadow to pay our share of the shared agreement.
Wouldn't we be paying something to replace our, our town nurse, starting May thirty or June first, or whatever? You said Carol Steiner was retiring?
Yep, yes, we would also be paying for that. We're working out, we will need to work out all the details of that, uh, how we will, um, pay the nurse. It also depends on how we move forward with hiring the nurse. Carol was going to be leaving in May, and it was nice enough to extend it, because we're in the midst of a pandemic, and so that just delayed some of our planning, um, but in a good way. Uh, so now it's just a matter of, are we actually going to pursue, pursue a shared service? And then we would hire a nurse, or East Long Meadow would hire the nurse, and then we would, um, we would pay towards that, uh, salary for East Long Meadow.
Okay, and, and, you know, so, I, I see that there's an email here that you a- answered some of the questions I had given you, sent you a couple, couple of weeks ago. I guess my biggest question was, you know, when we talk about deliverables, I mean, we don't have much of that, you know, other than Beverly reports to you, and what she does and doesn't do is answerable to the town manager. But given the fact that Amy isn't an employ- town employee, do, did we get a, you know, if you will, a list of deliverables? What we, what we can either, specific to this agreement, or something that's covered by a state law that says, here's what the Boards of Health shall do or must do, or something like that?
Uh, we don't have a actual document that, you know, is bullet-by-bullet of, um, you're going to do this and you're going to do this. I mean, there's a job description, uh, there's, and the annual reports were put in there to kind of give you context on the similarities between both health departments, but also, uh, highlighting, um, I think you'll see from there what additional staffing can do to a public health department. Um, they benefit from more public outreach than we currently are able to do, and that's no fault of anybody here. It's just that we are limited by our staffing levels. So I would imagine that all of that will continue, and then if not, grow from there. Uh, we certainly won't have any decrease in, uh, you know, giving out flu vaccines. That would be a, that would be a given, that we would continue that. Um, if there's really specific deliverables that you're aware of, that you would want to make sure are retained, I would love to hear what those are.
I, I don't know if Beverly does. I mean, you know, other than, you know, inspections of pools and, and, you know, vendor, food vendors and restaurants and that kind of stuff, and I know we're going to get a, 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 a separate inspector as part of this, this deal, so that the, the healthcare, or the health department director isn't doing the inspections. I, I just was, you know, I, again, I, I haven't gone through this, and this, and this agreement binds us for how long with East Long Meadow?
Um, well, technically, they're, they're subject to appropriation, um, as all of these agree. Well, technically, they're, they're subject to appropriation, as all of these agreements are. But this one is a three-year term. And will automatically renew unless each municipality gives notice. And there's a certain amount of threshold for notice that's required.
If I could jump in for a second, I know no one had a question, but Mark, I can help clarify that question you had in terms of what you can expect in terms of inspectional services. Those are laid out in Mass General Law in terms of how often those inspections need to be completed. So it won't necessarily be written out in my job description, but I will be required to meet the requirements of the Mass General Law. Does that help?
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Amy. I think this is a really crucial time because we're gonna have Beverly for another six months as we, we start to work out the details. I was hoping that we could, you know, we get monthly reports now telling us what's happening in our health department. If we could sort of get those still continuing. Maybe Paul, give us an idea of maybe four times a year, the first year, how we're looking at in the budget. And I'm sure you'll be doing that anyways as you build the budget for the next fiscal year. We'll, we'll see how this is going. It is a different animal from regional dispatch. And I think it's, it's a great model going forward, a in-source, outsource sort of idea. But it's a fantastic thing that the select board's been talking about for years. And that is, we've got to start regionalizing. And it's not so much finances, though the finances are gonna be great for us, but it's, it's better service. And we're in a complicated world with lots of mandates and Beverly's been telling us again and again, the mandates are huge. I was glad to see that the health board supported this going forward. And I'm just sorry, I'm gonna be off the board because I think it's gonna be exciting to watch this grow and develop. So wasn't so much a question as some comments. So Amy, welcome aboard, we'll look forward to hearing from you and see what exciting new things. Because unfortunately, this is a new world and you're a very important part of it. As we saw with COVID-19 and Beverly's been telling us this is gonna happen more and more. And we've had the, Wes Nile, she's been telling us every year. So health department is, is gonna be really important. So thank you for everything you're doing and Lynn, in pulling this together. Any other questions for Amy or Lynn? Tom?
I just, Amy, I was looking at your resume and I saw that you have an MSW from Smith College. And so-
No, I didn't finish my MSW. I did a year and then realized if I continued down social work path, I was gonna just be a very sad person. I loved it and I was great at it, but I am a bleeding heart. So I, I had to step away and reassess. And that's what I moved into, actually opened my own business for a while and then took some time to reassess. And that's when I moved into inspecting in North Canton in 2000.
Okay, but I was wondering if, when you look at what you're gonna be doing in our health department, will you look at it with a mental health perspective also? I mean, I guess that's-
Honestly, my social work experience and the work that I've done in social work has been one of the greatest pieces of the education that supports me in my work at public health. You know, whether you're going in to do a residential inspection and you're dealing with someone who has a mental illness like hoarding, you're condemning a building, you have children that you're working with, you always have to see the whole picture. Even if you're, whether it's in a restaurant, right? You're dealing with someone's livelihood. Throughout this process with COVID, we've been working with people who are ill, who maybe don't have resources. So looking at quarantine and isolation in the context of the support of the person and the resident is, you know, it's, it's something I think is a skill of mine. I think my educational background supports that. And it's something that I think is extremely important, delivery of public health services to have a lasting effect.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark?
Yeah, just as long as Amy's on the line, I just wanted to ask a question. I know, from, you know, my 10,000-foot-up perspective, one of the biggest differences is that the Board of Health of East Long Meadow runs the trash system program here in Long Meadow. We do that through the DPW. Do you see advantages enough to say, maybe you wanna do ours too?
That would get to Mario. I'm happy to have conversations with what Mario thinks is best. And Arlene, you guys have excellent trash and recycling people. And we've been great to get on their coattails. They've all taught me a lot, you know, when I came on, trash and recycling was not under the health department. And it made a huge difference to have, to rely on your team to help us advance ours.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the shared health service agreement. Oh wait, move to enter into an intermunicipal agreement for shared health services with the town of East Long Meadow, conditional upon the review of the agreement by town council. Is there a motion?
So moved, Richard Foster.
Is there a second?
A second.
Kuscha, further discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold? Mark Gold?
Present.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Amy, and thank you Lynn for all the work. And the board, I'm sure will look forward to further updates on how things are going. It's gonna be a very busy-
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a great night, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to move on to the naming of the Select Board Recognition Awards. There was a lot of discussion and so I tried to take everyone's ideas, put it together. And I came up with Citizen of the Year, a description of that as a lifetime of distinguished volunteer service to the town of Long Meadow. Citizen Commendation Award for Outstanding Service in 2020. I wanna run through everyone, see how you guys are happy with that. Richard, any edits or changes?
It seems to me that the Citizen of the Year Award definition is for the Citizen Commendation Award. And that the Citizen Commendation Award is the, the lifetime of a single's volunteer service to the community.
I thought of that too. The only reason I sucked it that way is we have a long tradition of the Citizen of the Year being a lifetime achievement award, as you described it. And so that's why I still call it Citizen of the Year for tradition.
Well, as I say, that's, that's my comment because the Citizen of the Year Award doesn't pertain to a lifetime of service. It pertains to outstanding service in the year of 2020, or whatever the year might be. Because we may not actually have a Citizen Commendation Award for a year.
Yeah, that's true, we might not. Okay, Mark Gold?
I'm fine.
Tom?
Well, I mean, in our town, we've had someone from our town, you know, have some accomplishment that maybe they should get some recognition in town. And I don't know, you know, when I saw that first list, I thought there was something that would cover that sort of a thing. You know, like, um, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering if we have to, if we would have a third category. I wish I had that older list that we had, but, but we just, we just wanna have two? You don't wanna have a third one for someone who isn't, it isn't a service award. It's just more of a, you know, something that makes the town look really good. Like if they win the voice.
You'd have to come up with the third category. I'm all tapped out. All right.
Marie? Just going back though, didn't we, I, I'm presuming your Citizen Commendation Award, you said, for outstanding service in 2020. I thought we were gonna say we could give that on a Tuesday if, you know, for something that, that happened the week before. And I just wanna make sure that that's what was intended by that.
Well, yeah, it was for this year. In other words, something that just happened. You could say 2019 for outstanding service this year.
But, but it's not limited to one award per year either necessarily.
No, no, there could be, you could have multiple Citizen Commendation Awards.
Fine, all right.
Mark Strange?
I don't have any comments, it's fine with me.
Okay, Richard, did you wanna amend the names of the awards?
I wouldn't dare.
Is there a motion to approve these two names?
Great, just one more discussion. I guess I would look at an amendment. You know, for the Citizen Commendation Award for outstanding service or-
To our community?
Or something to do with bringing recognition to the community. But I can't think of the words, I had it, it escaped me. For outstanding service or accomplishment in 2020?
Outstanding service accomplishment-
Service or, or accomplishment in 2020. So if, you know, like if, if someone from town, you know, becomes the governor of the state next, next week, you know, in, in November, that we would, could give an award like this.
Oh, I wouldn't give it to anyone in a political office. Half the town angry with you.
Well, let's say, yes, that probably wouldn't happen, but they're a combination, they've won. But the, but I mean, if, if there was some sort of a-
Nobel Peace Prize? But that wouldn't be to the town of Long Meadow.
They still want a combination from us. They say, what's up with Long Meadow? They can't recognize me, I get the peace prize.
I'm ready to kick this to the next chair, that's all I'm- If there's no motion, I'm moving it on. We got a lot of stuff to do tonight.
I'll place a motion on the floor.
You do, to accept-
I will place a motion on the floor that we approve.
I second it.
All right, all right, so, discussion. All right, you guys can always amend in the future. Okay, roll call vote.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I have a question.
Yeah.
We chose, we chose somebody to receive an award at the town meeting. And I need to do up this certificate. Which award are we using? What's name?
Citizen of the Year.
Citizen of the Year, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so you don't, in other words, this doesn't go for this year, this is for the future. It's like, you guys have things already typed up for this year, so.
No, no, I don't have anything typed up. I just, because I was confused as to what you were gonna call it.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, so yeah, I would say no changes.
And Debbie, is all clear to you now?
As of right now.
You better call me before the polls close tomorrow, I won't answer any questions. Okay, thanks. So I'm gonna go on to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline update. Wanted to just give you where things are. We've talked to our experts and Chief Dearborn has been working on this. And the issues that we are looking at are still emergency management. We're also looking at equipment and procedures that help mitigate sound and odor in regards to TGP and Columbia Eversource. I, I want us, everyone to know, we're still waiting, no permits have been pulled. And it's still a moving timeline out there. So there's really no basic information, but I just wanted you to know that the Select Board, the town manager and everyone are still working on this, this issue. Mark Strange, did you wanna add anything to that update?
No, that was a, that was a good summary, Marie. You know, we're, we're kind of just in a holding pattern right now. And, you know, we'll see, we'll see what happens in, in the future. I know that Tennessee Gas has started to construct their, their loop, as they call it, Loop Project in Agawam. So they're kind of making progress on the other side of the river. And so at some point, they're gonna, they're gonna come across the river. And we'll, we'll do our best when that happens.
Lynn, did you wanna add anything to that?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you. All right, going to move on to the next thing before we get into all the fun things. I'm just gonna throw through the appointments. We need to appoint for our tax title custodian yearly appointment. Appoint a town treasurer collector Cheryl Cudnick, tax title custodian through June 30th, 2021, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 60, Section 77B. Is there a motion?
So moved.
That was Tom Lakusha, is there a second?
Second.
Richard Foster, second it. Okay, any questions? All right, roll call vote.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
This was voted on tonight. So the current chair, vice chair and clerk are the ones, we all have to go and sign this with you, correct? Debbie?
If you wanna come into the office, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so when you come in and you sign, everyone has to be, vice chair will be Richard and then Mark Strange is the clerk. So I just wanted to, it's gonna get confusing in the next 24 hours. All right, and the next appointment is town council. I know we voted on the contracts, but we still have to go through the appointment of town council. So I'm looking for a motion to approve for town council, Dotery, Wallace, Pillsbury and Murphy. And for labor council, Sullivan, Hayes and Quinn. We are currently using this for the current fiscal year and this is for the upcoming fiscal year. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
That was Tom Lakusha moved it, is there a second?
Second.
Richard Foster, second, okay, any discussion, roll call vote.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going on to the next item, which is the MGM contract. It was requested by Mark Gold. He wanted to discuss the negotiations possibility or where that contract stands?
No, it was actually, I, I thought I explained it as a contract negotiation strategy. And I'd suggest, I'd requested it to be as an executive session. I don't think we discussed contracts negotiation.
We didn't see, back to, there's no negotiations, we could not see how that could go into executive session. The, that's why it was not put into executive session. And that's why I thought we could talk about the actual agreement. And I know I'm-
I'll talk about the agreement and what I intend, what I was intending to talk about. The MGM contract is people, I hope know, calls for 19 consecutive payments, beginning with $275,000 in year one, which was two years ago and escalating 2.5% per year. So the current fiscal year, which is 2020, it went up by 2.5%. That came out to something like 280 some odd thousand dollars and it goes up 2% per year beyond that. You know, my concern is that at some point, will MGM go, either come to us or go to the gaming commission and say, look, we've been closed for several months, we're gonna operate at reduced capacity. And we want, you know, relief from our, our surrounding community agreement payments. Because we don't have revenue. And my thought was, rather than wait for MGM to come to us, we would go to them with a proposal. And that was the basis of my, my wanting to get a sense of the board. Did anybody want to get a, you know, put together a proposal and go to them so that we get out in front of this? I, I believe I demonstrated that I think a lot like the MGM folks. I have no doubt in my mind that this request for an abatement or a reduction in their surrounding community agreement will, will come forward. And I, I'd rather have it on our terms than their terms. And they might just go right to the gaming commission without us having a, a shot at it. And that was my thought.
Well, Mark, I have to say, again, kudos, the two and a half escalation was your idea and really respect that. On page three, paragraph three of the agreement is one line where, God bless Brandon. It says, this payment, annual payment is not subject to setup or reduction for any reason. So I say, our lawyers put that in and I, I don't see wiggle room in that because it's- So I say, our lawyers put that in and I, I don't see wiggle room in that because it says, not subject to setup or reduction for any reason. And I know there was discussion about whether they made more money. Do we now get to make more money? And of course they said no. So we said, then forget it. We're not gonna give you, you're not gonna pay us less money because you're making less money. And if they want to say they're making less money, I'll look at the grander MGM umbrella and say, so I would not negotiate against ourselves. Um, Richard Foster, do you have an idea on this MGM contract?
No, no, I don't, Marie. I just sit sitting on the sidelines, but I agree with you. Uh, that clause does seem to cover us.
Um, Tom?
Yeah, I, I think that contract is well negotiated and, um, all the other communities looked at our contract to try to set up one similar. So I wouldn't touch it.
Um, Mark Strange?
Agreed. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a pretty strong contract in our favor. I wouldn't want to open that back up. Okay, thank you.
Okay, but thanks for the thoughts. You're staying one, one step ahead of us, Mark. Okay, now let's go to the, um, bylaws. Mark, do you want to, uh, we heard from our, our residents and, and, uh, Mark, you asked to have this put on. You want to talk about it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to beat this to death. We heard from three people in resident comments and there was another person who sent us in a letter. And I, I just think it's worth us going back with this and, and making sure that we're all on board, that bylaws should be enforced. And if we have an ineffective means of enforcing it, then we've got to do whatever it is to do that. I mean, bylaws are there to protect the bulk of the residents. Uh, so, you know, it, like anything else, I think we've got some potential concerns and, and, you know, I, you know, I can point to individual concerns or individual things, but, but overall there was enough different categories, whether it's, you know, we go back long enough, we've had noise complaints, we've had parking complaints, we have sidewalk complaints. And so I just wanted to make sure that the select board was all on board, that we ought to be enforcing bylaws. I will also add this, that I specifically asked our, uh, our chief stocks, police chief stocks about by law enforcement. And I thought he gave a phenomenal answer. It was very, very good. It was, you know, I'm not, we're not gonna walk up to the, the house, knock on the door and say, here's a $50 ticket. You didn't shovel your driveway or your sidewalk. I'm sorry. No, we're gonna tell them you gotta shovel your sidewalk. But, you know, the third storm in a row when they haven't shoveled their sidewalk, I think, you know, there's a recognition we need to do something about it. So I, you know, I just want to make sure that we're all on board because if we're not, we're gonna continue to get the, some individual residents not, not happy.
Okay, Richard Foster?
Well, I, I agree wholeheartedly with what Mark is saying. We've, uh, we've had repeated complaints. I think we got what, four, four tonight or three tonight? They're all dealing with the same issue about the enforcement of our bylaws. And, and I do understand, um, I do understand the staffing limitations that we have, but I think each of them are right, that we in fact do have bylaws and that we should be, we should find a way to enforce them, uh, with some progressive, progressive mechanism. I mean, we've got some long-term cases going on, uh, in our community. I think we're aware of it. And I, I think it's time for action, Marie.
Okay. Uh, Tom?
Well, it's, it's nice when people can live next to each other and get along. I mean, really, that's the main goal. But when we look at, you know, laws, I mean, you go back to Hammelbary, I think it's in Mesopotamia, the first laws that they found. It had to do with conflicts about property and rights and, um, so this has been around a long time. You know, people don't always agree with how things should be. And we've developed laws to address it. And so, you know, once a law is developed, you know, we have to make sure that it is enforced.
Mark Strange?
Yeah, I fully agree with what everybody has said. You know, I think, um, you know, en, enforcement is, is, uh, is an area I think that we can, we can improve upon. Um, you know, I know that it's, there, there's a lot of properties in town. There's a lot of bylaws. And, uh, so, you know, staffing and, and, and human resources is certainly an issue. Uh, we're just driving around, you know, I see commercial vehicles parked in, in driveways. Um, people's lawns are, are really high. Um, there's cars parked, uh, just on my street, there's cars parked overnight. Um, that's just my street. Um, so I, you know, I do, I, I don't want to just talk about it. Um, I think, you know, is there, how do we, how do we, you know, put together some sort of concerted effort, um, to start, you know, in a realistic, pragmatic way, enforcing the bylaws that, that we need to enforce? Um, you know, and, and, and some of them, many of them, uh, maybe, um, have, have fines associated with them. And, um, I don't know if there's a way to quantify, you know, what that might be, like be worth on an annual basis. Um, I don't want, you know, create, create too much work for people, but I think it's important. I think, you know, as we're, as we're moving into, toward the tax ceiling, you know, I, I think, I think the aesthetics of, of the town are gonna be even more important as we're, as we're moving forward. Um, and I, I really think this is an important issue for the town.
Um, I think so too. Of course, I drive around when I see the overgrown weeds, it, it's, I sometimes click and report. But one of the things that I did have been hearing lately, and I, I want us to keep that in mind, and that is giving the police this job. The more you give your police force outside actual law enforcement and you start doing bylaws and everything, I think there, there comes a level of conflict there that I'm not even sure if we want to go there. Uh, so I think we need to sit down and really look is how can we appropriately enforce these? What is an effective method? What bylaws need to be changed? Because that's what we heard from Mr. Fox, that, uh, the bylaws have to be changed according to the building inspector. Uh, who will be writing these tickets? Who will be reporting? Do we have a method which individuals can report? And then they, these reports and how many would they receive? Will there be a board to review them? Whether it's like the traffic committee where Lynn sits down once a month with the building inspector and everyone. Lynn, if you could put together what you feel is the best way to solve this problem and creatively, uh, try to get this done. I don't want it to become where you have someone running around listing all of the bylaw violations throughout town. There should be an effective method to start enforcing these. And this is a problem, Lynn, we've been arguing about since I came on this board, 11 years, nine years, not 11, it feels like it.
Will you do something about it finally, Lynn?
Yes. So it's not an easy thing because it, it causes emotion. And I thought it was very interesting what Mr. Foley said yesterday about the state police are willing to come and take a look at something because it's a state road and we'll look at that and the truck. So if you could see what your recommendations are going forward. Um, I ask that residents give, um, Lynn a little time to finally come up to a real solution. And I, I won't be on the board to hear your brilliant ideas, Lynn, but, uh, I'm sure you'll come up with something. Um, and I know that Paul Healy has a lot of ideas, uh, but it's going to take a while to really get those in line. But in the meantime, um, it's a tough issue. It really is. But I don't think there's anyone on this board who does not want to have the bylaws enforced, doesn't want to see chippers sitting in people's front yard and doesn't want to see grass growing a foot tall. So, um, any ideas, Lynn, or you need some time to work on it?
Um, well, I, I want to just clarify that their enforcement is happening. Uh, Paul Healy, I'm in contact with him sometimes every single day regarding a complaint I receive. He goes out, he checks it out, he talks to the homeowner. Uh, sometimes he'll issue tickets. He works with the police department if it's an overnight, some, uh, situation that he needs to have them take a ride by and look at. Uh, so he is, he is working, um, on all of these issues and following up on these complaints and issuing tickets when he needs to. He has a, a virtual hearing June 26th on a ticket that's been appealed. I, I spent a great bit of time on this before COVID started, uh, working on, meeting with Dr. Fox, talking with Mr. Goldberg, uh, hearing about other, uh, situations happening throughout town, getting the, uh, background from Paul Healy. And one of the big things that was identified is putting teeth in these tickets because we, Paul can go out, he can issue a ticket and if they appeal it and/or they don't pay it, they, um, there, there, we have very little recourse after that. Even if the court issues a judgment on it, again, we still have very little recourse for them paying these tickets. And one of the solutions to that is, um, adopting a section of general law that we have already done for, uh, utility type payments, where if you don't pay those, we can lean your property. And it's been effective. You, uh, you all, I think it was not too long ago that you did one for abandoned and foreclosed homes. And that's been incredibly successful. Paul had ticketed quite a few of those properties that hadn't been keeping them up. And he, uh, received $18,000 in, uh, ticketing fees because of that, because he was able to lean those properties. So, um, it's, it's unfortunately a last resort, I think, but I think we're there. Um, and Paul is frustrated. He wants to be responsive and a good public servant. I mean, nobody wants to do these types of jobs and feel like they're not being successful or, um, or they have really limited ability to solve a problem. Um, and so I, I just wanted to clarify that Paul is out there enforcing tickets. He's working with the police department to do it. And I do think we have a little bit of light at the tunnel with, uh, a, a bylaw that I have ready to go for fall town meeting.
Oh, wonderful. That's great. Uh, Mark Gold?
Yeah, I, I just, Lynn, thank you. I want to just quote from Paul Healy's monthly report that happened to be in this packet. I'm not picking one out. It was this packet. It says, "I have sent letters to repeat offenders which have been ignored, sent fines of that, that have been ignored." So you, you're right. It's, you know, people need to understand Paul is working as he can. And I think this may be a situation where, you know, he responds to a, a hundred cases and if four or five people don't respond, you know, those are the ones that, that kind of continue to gnaw, people who are complaining about it. So I, I, I understand it. But having said that, there's one, I think it's a policy, I don't know what it is, that has, has come up that I'd like to also comment on. Under our prior town manager, he made sure and insisted that Mr. Healy make public and communicate to the complaint, the person being complained about, the name of the person who complained. And what we found out is that, that, that that's not required by state law. In fact, the only reason you'd need, you may need to release the name of somebody doing the complaining is if it should go to court and then that person would need to come forward and, and testify in court. But I'd like to see a review of that policy in town that, that has us, you know, saying, well, it's not me who's complaining. It's your, your, your neighbor, Mr. Smith, or, or the person down the, you know, across the street, you know, Mr. Jones or something. I think that, that's a, a problem because it, it does pit neighbor against neighbor. And the intent isn't to pit neighbor against neighbors, to say, you know, you're not, you're not obeying the, the bylaws of the town and we're doing, we're taking this on as a town.
Can I, I don't want to, go ahead, Marie. Sorry. I can comment to that if.
Oh, no, go ahead, Lynn.
Um, I, I understand that, Mark. Um, I've worked in a community where we, we did take anonymous complaints and then we had to amend that because, um, there is concern that if you're taking a phone call and it's an anonymous complaint, that there is nothing to back it up, uh, to protect that employee, that they are targeting someone specifically. Um, I, I think we could probably make some modifications as to how we do this, but I also, um, think we should probably look at the select board town manager policy about correspondence because the board.
I, Lynn, I, I agree with you. I don't, if somebody sends me a note and doesn't sign it, I don't pay attention to it. And I agree with that. The point is though, that, you know, it, I don't go call you up and say, John Smith sent me a note. I'll tell you, I have a note from somebody. If push came to shove, I could show you John Smith's note. And I think, you know, if Paul Healy did the same thing, I'm not, you know, that it's a legitimate person complaining, but I don't think that it should be, you know, a policy that the first thing he does is knocks on the door and says, John Smith complained about you. That, that was my point. I agree that anonymous complaints are worthless.
Okay. Uh, and, oh, Mark Strange?
Yeah, I, you know, I, you want to protect people, you know, because oftentimes, you know, the, the violations that you see are close to your home, right? Or you're close to, you know, places that you frequent. So, um, I think, I think, you know, people need to be able to, um, you know, log a complaint, doesn't have to be anonymous, but, um, I don't, I don't think we should be sharing that person's name with the, with the offender. Um, you know, the, the point is to, you know, get the lawn mowed, get the, get the guards off the streets, you know, get the cars out of the driveways. That's the whole point. That benefits the whole town. Um, certainly don't want, it would, don't want to have a chilling effect on people reporting, uh, you know, violations because they're afraid of, of backlash. Um, you know, the, the other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, I, I know Paul does, does a great job. Um, but he has an enormous, enormous responsibility for, for one person. And we need to give him the tools that, 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 that he needs to be successful. I don't know what that is. I don't know if it's more, you know, uh, you know, stronger enforcement mechanisms in the bylaws. I fully support that. Um, if it's, you know, additional, uh, personnel. Um, you know, again, we'd have to look at, you know, quantifying, you know, fines and, and what our return on investment would be. Um, you know, we, we need to give Paul the tools, you know, like, because again, you know, we trade largely on our aesth, our aesthetics. And, um, you know, I, I, uh, you know, I, I, I think there, you know, I think there's, there's huge improvement right now.
I had, uh, I'm still on the phone, Andrew Fox. I just had a, a comment for, or kind of a question comment for the town manager. If this is going on.
Mr. Fox, you can't, you can't, I'm sorry during our, uh, you can't, the only time you can speak is during, um, your meeting and, your comments and later you can email.
Well, I'm just suggesting that if this reinforcement is going on, let us know about it. Because as far as we're concerned, nothing's going on because we never hear about what Mr. Healy's doing.
Thank you. Lynn, I mean, I, I was calling on Tom. Tom?
Yes. Um, the thing is that, you know, some of this is issues of mediation also. Because there are some people who, you know, they look at their neighbor and say, they are inappropriate. They are doing something wrong. And, um, usually when we point the finger at something, there's three fingers pointing back at us, you know? And, and so it's hard for one person to really, you know, I mean, although we have some laws, I mean, I think that there's a point where two people, sometimes neighbors shouldn't even live next to each other. And there's the only way they, 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 one of them should move or they should mediate a solution. Um, we can get the police involved. And I don't know if that's necessarily gonna cause a problem, you know, what, you know, in Colorado, they invented the Denver boot. You know, they put this boot on a vehicle. They said, well, they don't want to pay anything, so we'll, we'll, we'll close their vehicle. You know, we could tow vehicles. I mean, but all these things are gonna just escalate the conflict. And you're gonna have two people who are gonna be ready to duke it out in the, in the street. And, and that's not good for a family. That's not good for values of your property, you know? And so we really have to look at mediation. I mean, I think that we're missing a, a big thing if we don't do that because these parties have reached a point where they can't even look at each other or talk to each other. And, you know, it's either one of them has to move or they have to mediate.
Thank you, Tom. Richard, uh, I, I never see you used to raise your hand. Did you want to say anything else?
Oh, no, no, I didn't, Marie.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Lynn. I think you, you, you've heard a lot this evening and, uh, I'm very pleased to hear you already have a bylaw in your back pocket ready to go. So thank you very much for being, uh, ahead on that. I know I've pushed you all the way to the end, but Lynn, do you want to give your town manager's report? Ten o'clock at night.
I'll go quick because I'm sure you're all tired. Um, coronavirus updates are still posted on the town website. Um, the CARES Act fund on Friday, uh, June 12th, working through the finance director. Paul submitted the, uh, the town's application for CARES Act funding in the amount of $411,447. That's out of the 1.4 million that we have available. Uh, upon approval of the application, we've been told that funds are distributed very quickly. We anticipate that the next round of CARES Act funding will be available in October or early November. Uh, the DPW and adult center building projects are moving on still. The salt shed at the DPW is completely erected. Two donations were received for the adult center. One was for $18,000 for the recent panels on the stairway and the other was for $20,000 towards the maple, maple chair rail. And a thank you to the Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund for those contributions. A tree at the adult center site was evaluated by an arborist early this spring and at the time it was thought to be okay. However, as we watched it leaf out, uh, over this spring, we felt it warranted another look by the arborist. The determination was made that the tree was not healthy and should be removed. And I put some photos there in the town manager's report so you can see that we made the right decision. Um, the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant that, uh, was just announced, well, was announced, uh, late this spring. The grant round was. The grant round was supposed to close on the 11th, but they extended it out a week. However, we still got an application in. We submitted it on the 11th. And this is for us preparing for a continuing multi-day emergency operation of the town's most mission-critical facilities, which includes the Adult Center as our resilience hub, the high school for the emergency shelter, the new Department of Public Works facility, and the municipal campus consisting of fire, police, and town hall. It's a competitive grant process, but we feel this strong application, that we're well positioned because of the strong application for at least one of the sites. We should receive a response on the application in August. So just to very quickly tell you, this would be design, planning, and preparation of bid docs for solar arrays at those facilities, along with solar storage banks, too. And the term resilience hub really speaks to the Adult Center, and we've seen it this pandemic with the fact that they are the office location for the public health nurse, they run the Meals on Wheels program, and they have the town's food pantry. They really do check all the boxes for being a resilience hub. So I'm hopeful that at least that site will be funded. The Wolf Swamp Fields, the final design plan was reviewed on the site with town staff and the architect. The placement of the driveway is in proximity to a wetland. And a request for determination of applicability was filed with the Conservation Commission. The commission met last week on the 10th, and the item was continued for further discussion so that more answers could be received to some of the questions that they had. The next meeting is June 24th, and depending on that outcome, the plan will be ready to put out to bid. Landfill Phase 1 is complete. The cap was installed and grass is growing. Phase 2 is ninety-nine percent complete, and we're working through some punch list items now, and it should be 100% complete within a week or 10 days. The Bliss and Laurel Parks Master Plan, we held the second and final community meeting with the Conway School last week. This was part of the master planning process. I'm sorry, we held it on June 4th, not last week. The meeting was streamed on LCTV and taped. For anyone who missed it, there's a link on the website now to watch that forum if you want to see it. And we will receive two, probably two more final designs in their final project that they submit to the town. And there's a signup sheet on the website if you want to continue to receive updates on this project as we look toward what the next phase might be like. LED streetlights, the first batch of decorative fixtures have shipped from Tango in California and should be received sometime this week. Arden will begin installation of the decorative fixtures the week of June 22nd. MAPC has informed the town that we will receive our grant funds in FY21. They're a little bit delayed. But we'll be getting them. And the Community House, if anybody drove by there late last week, you would have seen the work that was happening on the wood balustrades. They were inspected this spring, and it was determined that they were deteriorated to a point that they could be a safety issue. And knowing that the town election was happening, and there'd be quite a bit of activity outside of the Community House, we made the move to take those down. There is a town meeting article, Article 26 is funding for the roof. And it will also include replacing the balustrades. That's a CPC project that was approved in the fall. And that's it.
Any questions? Mark Gold?
Yeah, I have a few, Lynn. It's mostly, it's not particularly about your report, but just the monthly reports that we receive. What about the DPW, a couple? One is, there's been, you know, I've been doing a lot of walking in the last three months around my neighborhood. There are an awful lot of what I'll call DPW barrels, plates on the roads and things like that, that have been there a very, very long period of time. I mean, Inverness Lane has a couple, Captain Road has a couple, Cambridge Circle. Is there a plan for any of these? Some of these have been there a year and a half or two years. I mean, we've got collapsing storm, you know, storm swords on grassy gutter in front of the high school. I was just wondering if they've got a list and if they've got a time plan for those. And if they do, if you could share it. And part of, I guess, hand in glove with that is I saw that Chad just went out for bid on the Knollwood Road project. Is there a schedule for the Knollwood Road sidewalks? You know, now that, I mean, school's been out for a while, but I thought that was important. Another question would be, do you know if there's any status on the on the broken memorial bench at the Adult Center? Are we planning to replace it, repair it? Or do anything with it? You know, there's a lot of people, I think, who look very kindly upon Karen Michaelman, who was upset when that happened. And the last thing is just a quick question. What's going on behind town hall? There's, it looks great. I don't know what took us along, but is that a town project or a private project?
Private. It's not ours.
That's not our land back there?
Nope. Do you want me to address any of this, or do you want me to include it?
If you have the answers, that's fine. I don't know if anybody else is interested, or you can just find out and send it along, you know.
I can certainly give you an update on Knollwood. I don't have updates on the other items, but Knollwood I can give you an update on. We came up with a final design. I pulled together a meeting of all interested parties, including the petitioner in late May, mid-May. I'm losing track of time. And unfortunately, the petitioner wasn't able to make it, but we did share the plans with her. There was about nine of us on site. We walked the whole area. We came up while we were there with an alternate plan that we felt may work just as well and would save some public shade trees in the process. And we went back to the petitioner to discuss that and also just see if what we had designed was going to meet the spirit of the warrant. Because there were some concerns that the comprehensive plan that we had developed over the winter may not meet that. So last week, Mario Mazza and the petitioner's spouse had a conversation. They reviewed the design plans. And they wanted to go with the more comprehensive plan. And so that was what was decided and was put out to bid last week as a result.
So, fine. My only thought was, I thought they had petitioned for sidewalks, period. And I didn't realize there was this detailed design, so it sounds like you've got that one covered.
Richard, did you have any questions for Lynn?
No.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, well, I just, when I looked at the police report, one of the things that came up is the traffic camera project. And I had a resident ask me about that. They felt like, they were surprised to see cameras at the corner of Maple Street and Long Meadow Street. And I don't know at what level a decision like that should be made. I don't know if that should, is a policy decision that should come up before the board, or if it should be presented at someplace to the board? Or if we should just read about it in a report? I know it wasn't, it's been there longer than our current police chief. So I know it's not Chief Stox's, you know, that he set this up. But I don't know what other people on the board feel like that. You know, if you're in downtown Springfield, you know, you think, okay, you know, I'm going to be on camera. I'm in downtown Boston, I'm going to be on camera. If I walk down Times Square, they're going to do face recognition when I'm, to make sure I'm not a terrorist. But, you know, in Long Meadow, to have cameras out here, is that something that the board should have been notified about or discussed? And I guess that's, I'm not sure, but I think we probably should have had some kind of discussion about it. I don't know how other people feel.
I thought, I had heard, we had discussed it, it had been mentioned to us months and months ago, I thought. I mean, when I read about it, it was kind of, oh, so they're finally getting around to it. Because we had discussed that a long, long time ago. I can go back for minutes, but. So this wasn't, at least for me, it wasn't the first time I heard about it, Tom.
Yeah, I know we talked about it. We talked about linking cameras to the police and so forth, but I guess I didn't realize. And I don't know exactly how many intersections it's going to go up on. Maybe we could, we could talk about it at some point.
All right, Mark Strange, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your report, Lynn. All right, I'm going to be very brief on my chair report. I gave everyone two copies of the Select Board, what do you call it? Rules of Conduct. It was just for you to kick off that project. I did ask Debbie to order new manuals for everyone, because I know they haven't handed them out in a while. And so the Select Board manuals are going to come in for all of us. Mark Strange found some great ones that are actually put out by the MMA. I just recommend you find something like that so that all future Select Board members get it in a packet. So everyone knows what the requirements are to be a Select Board member. So you guys could just, just some ideas for you to do in the future. Also, my future projects for the Select Board, I gave you one of my brain dumps. Only came up with nineteen. I had said, oh, I got to come up with twenty. Nineteen's a weird number. So, you know, a lot of the things, the things we've been kicking around for a long time there. If I was going to pick one thing out that I'd ask you to please consider, and that is the mental health program. Tom, that's probably going to be close to your heart. We've heard for a long time that public safety employees are under a lot of stress. PTSD does exist. And I really think that, I know Chief Madison was looking at this. He says, there's a regional effort to try to push something together. And whatever we can fund, please consider a mental health program for all employees, especially public safety. So those are all my ideas. I want to thank you guys. It's been a nice nine years. But after a three-hour and twenty-minute meeting, I don't think I'm going to miss it that much. It'll be fine. I'll think of you in a few weeks. So now we'll just go around to Select Board comments, because I threw that at the end, because I was trying to get as many of our people on there as possible. Mark Strange, any Select Board comments for the week?
Yeah, I just, I wish we could have had this meeting in person, because I just wanted to thank you for, you know, until you've actually been on the Select Board and you know all that it entails, you cannot possibly appreciate how much of yourself you put into the town over nine years. So as a resident, as a citizen, I really thank you for that. On a more personal level, I thank you for being, you know, a great role model for chairmanship and for being a Select Board member. And we're going to miss you.
No, thank you. Mark Gold? He's intentionally muted. You're muted, Mark.
Sorry about that. Yeah, two comments. It's been a long night. The first one is, again, to thank you, Marie. We've been on the Select Board for nine years together. Both learned a lot from one another, so I appreciate your comments. But I also had some comments that I prepared about our last meeting, and I want to go through them because I think they're kind of where we are moving forward. Because clearly, I was disappointed at our last meeting when we talked about approving restaurants opening and delegating our authority, unfortunately, to the town manager. And I think it's important that we understand the distinction between accountability, which is authority, and responsibility. And accountability and authority are granted. It's really where the buck stops, you know, in situations where there's legal responsibility. It's the person who's legally responsible. You know, in the case of restaurant reopenings, there was a proclamation by the governor that granted accountability and authority to the Select Board for this action. Responsibility is getting the work done, determining a plan if it's needed, and executing the plan. Unlike accountability, you can designate responsibility for many people. The distinction between accountability and responsibility is that the accountable party is answerable for the decisions made and actions taken, even though the responsible party may be the one charged with completing the tasks. Delegating responsibility without feedback is, in my opinion, an abdication of the authority that was granted to the Select Board by the governor. The good news is that Lynn is smarter than the board, and has taken upon herself to communicate with the board about what's being done with the responsibility she was given. But her follow-up doesn't absolve the board from their actions of delegation of responsibility without requesting the feedback that would assure their ability to remain sufficiently knowledgeable about the items and the issues that were entrusted to them by the governor's assignment of accountability to the opening of restaurants in the town. And just to be clear, I have no problem with the delegation of responsibility to the town manager on this issue. I voted for it. The problem I have is with the delegation of responsibility without the required feedback. Because that has the effect of trying to delegate authority, and that's something you can't do. Elected officials cannot use the delegation of responsibility as a means of skirting their accountability, whether that accountability is granted to them by the town charter, state law, or the proclamation of the governor. So it's my hope that should a similar situation occur in the future, the Select Board will keep in mind the difference between accountability and responsibility and recognize that they cannot and should not delegate their accountability. Because if they do that, they're delegating their authority and abdicating their oath of office. Thank you.
Okay, Tom?
Well, Marie, I guess I, I don't know how to put it in words. I mean, I gave you some flowers today as a way of thanking you. But, you know, you have provided a lot of great leadership. And folks have seen it, and like Mark said, you know, behind the scenes, you're just as influential and powerful, you know. You know, I came onto the board, and there was a lot of conflict, as you know. And, you know, you, you know, were a big architect of resolving a lot of that conflict. And I hope the town realizes what an important role you played and how much, you know, your efforts changed this town, got things back on track to where people could watch Select Board meetings and not think that they were on the wrong station. You know, thinking, well, there's a battle going on. How come they all so angry at each other? So you provided that leadership. And then the other side is, you seem to be everywhere, doing everything, you know. You're involved with the Adult Center. Of course, you were a major force in getting that building, you know, on the map, you know, and it's almost done. And I know that, you know, you should play a big part in when they opened that building. But, you know, but then you're also teaching cooking classes, and you're, you know, attending all these meetings. You're the finance committee. You know, you really covered a lot of ground. And, you know, you know, I don't know if the town could really understand just what a what an important element, you know, you've been in this Select Board. And, you know, we're not a perfect board. We probably never will be a perfect board. But, you know, you've really helped us accept each other and work with each other, even though at times we probably just walk out. And some people have walked out. But for the most part, you know, you've always been a voice of reason. And my wife, who watches all the meetings, and she's watching them way before I ever was, says, "You're the best person." She says, "There's just no way you can replace Marie. You might as well just close up shop." But I'm a little more optimistic than that.
I'll be sending out text messages, don't worry, during the meeting. Thanks. Richard?
Yeah, Ray. Yeah, I, thank you. Yeah, tonight, tonight will be Marie Angelidi's last meeting as a Select Board member and as a Chair for the Long Meadow Select Board. Marie will leave the board after serving nine years as a Select Person. When you stop and review all the people that have served as a Select in our community, you will note that all serve with dignity. But with a closer examination, you will see many who have all above made major contributions towards improving our community for the present and the future. These are the ones that displayed leadership and vision in a reactive style in problem solving. These individuals recurrently demonstrated the importance of being open-minded, commingled with the desire to hear and understand the needs of our residents while proactively encouraging changes which serve the best interests of our community. They are more visionary and recognize the long-range needs of our community and an establishment of proactive programs designed to eliminate further threats or greatly minimize the impact of the threats. These are the movers and shakers who demand that we continue to improve without becoming complacent. Marie is one of these individuals, and her enthusiasm for pushing the envelope and brainstorming new ideas and solutions will be missed. It would be nearly impossible for me to list all of Marie's accomplishments, but I'll list a few that I believe stand out in support of her leadership and devotion to our community. She recommended changes in the way we manage our retirement health insurance plans, which saved our community over a hundred thousand dollars. She led one town manager search and managed a second town manager search. She advocated for a line item in the budget to fund OPEB and advocated for a special trust fund for the funds. She recommended and advocated for a complete streets program. She established and chaired the tax ceiling task force. She advocated and worked for a new Adult Center and DPW. task force. She advocated and worked for a new adult center and DPW complex. She advocated for the fire ladder truck and just might have been the author of the citizen petition on that issue. Accordingly, Marie will be presented a plaque by the town of Long Meadow in honor of the select, in honor of her select board service. And the plaque will read, "The town of Long Meadow gratefully acknowledges Marie Angelides for serving on the select board from 2011 to 2020. Thank you for your many years of exceptional service to the town and its residents." Marie, on a personal note, before I met Marie, I was standing, I was doing a standout. And this little lady come up behind me and was holding one of my signs and I didn't know her from Adam. And, and we met down on Maple Street. The second major encounter I had is I was on the board for about, I think, two weeks and there was a conference. And Marie said, well, Richard, I'll pick you up and we'll go to the conference together. About 20 minutes past the point that she was supposed to pick me up, I finally called her and she says, oops, I forgot. That's how we started. And since that time, we've had, I think we've enjoyed a, a very, very beneficial relationship. Uh, we've not always been pleasant, but it's always been productive. And, and the one key thing that I think has always been present is anytime Marie and I have met, discussed, argued, bantered, it has always been in the best interest of our community. It has never been personal. It has always been founded in what is the best possible direction we can set for our community. Marie, I wish you the best of luck in retirement. I hate to see you go, but you've served nine years. Uh, I've been the chair for a couple of years. I understand the strain that it puts on and I understand the, the contributions you, you've made. I wish you the best in retirement.
Thank you. And thank you for the memories. It's been a very interesting nine years and lots of fun, but I'm ready to retire. Good luck, you guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So that's it for tonight and for the nine years. And the next meeting will be on the 17th. You're going to reorganize. And then there is the, um, the forum on Monday. So have fun and I'll see you at the town meeting. Bye.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I totally forgot. Without you, Richard. Is there a motion to adjourn, Richard?
There is a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And we need a roll call.
Last roll call for you, Marie. Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes, unfortunately it's over.
Yes. Thanks again. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.